County Board to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's working. We're good.
Pulls my chair out from me.
Yeah?
Oh, that was.
Roll call, Beth?
Sure. Commissioner Benoit?
Here.
Commissioner Heinem?
Present.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Thank you.
Approve or amend the agenda?
Sir, Mr. Chair, after today's consent agenda, could we please recess County Board to conduct an HRA?
Okay.
And then, of course, then resume County Board.
Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Move for approval of the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. County Board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The County Board observes the Robert's Rules of Order for its meeting, so please obtain the County Board Chair's consent before addressing the County Board. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comments on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the Board Chair. As we begin today, please turn your phones off or just vibrate. Thank you. Open forum? Nobody's there. So now we'll re- or we'll do the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to remove items three and four, as long as our county auditor's here, and just have a brief discussion in regards to those. And with that, then I'll also move to approve items one and two.
I'll second.
Motion's been made to approve items one and two, and we'll have three and four for the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christine, we could just have a brief description of these two applications. I appreciate it.
So, the first one for Oak Hill, they sold. I believe their closing date is today.
Okay.
So, the new applicant came in to apply about two weeks ago, not knowing that the process takes as long as it does. So, they signed a management agreement between the buyer and seller, so that the buyer could use the seller's liquor license until his is approved and he receives it. So, that one's not.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's okay. Yep. The second one is the Minimart in south of Rice, off of Highway 10. This company operates out of Tennessee, and they're always late with filing their application or renewal. And when we sent them the packet this last time, they responded to us and let us know that somebody would be buying the business, so they didn't know if they were going to be reapplying or not for their renewal. And then, nothing happened. We didn't hear from them. We kept emailing them. Finally, they said that they had mailed a check, and we never received it. Then, the new owner, or the potential new owner, came in and applied, and that license is, application is, a mess. There's many missing parts. The township didn't approve it, so we don't have that. But they did, the township did approve the current owner, the one that's on here. It's, it's a mess to try to follow this whole web of... So, currently, we have Mr. Shadri, who is applying, who is the current owner, and owns the property right now, which is what our ordinance states, that the owner of the property needs to be the one that is applying. And they're also the ones who, because they didn't get everything in, they lapsed, and they don't have a current license now, so they were shut down by the state agency, and they, they currently can't sell. And that's been since July 18th, so they were selling for about a three-week period of time there without a, a current valid license.
And the sheriff's office has seen this?
Yep. And he stated that there's no disqualifying criminal convictions for the application, but just wanted you to be aware that they were selling illegally for three weeks.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, at that time, doesn't the state kick in if they know about it?
They say, so they did kick in. They went out there, investigated. They did sell to the agent that was undercover. And then, he went back, investigated, and talked to the employee, and the employee said that they were unaware that they didn't have a license, which most gas station employees probably wouldn't know. And so, he said that our county attorney probably couldn't press charges against that employee, like they wouldn't stand in court because they didn't know. But I guess there's, nothing happens to the actual applicant, other than that they're, they shouldn't be selling right now.
So, what happens when, if they, if they do sell this, that new owner have to reapply, or does he get the old?
No, he has to reapply.
And how will you know if it's sold?
Well, we would get the documents.
And it's up to you to catch it, that, oh, that got sold, and now we need to request a different licensure?
Yeah.
I think I would make a stipulation that they get a hold of you right away.
So, Michelle said that she wanted to see the actual agreement, so they gave us a purchase agreement dated July 1st, but nothing's been recorded in our office yet that it's actually sold.
So, it's still pending for selling.
And they haven't, they're, they're not delinquent on taxes, but they haven't paid first half. So, that would, they would have to pay the taxes in order for the sale.
My guess, that's in the sale.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so none of that has happened yet.
So, the current owner does meet what he needs to do for a license?
Yeah.
Kind of what it gets down to. All right.
But, but you can't grant the old owner, or the existing owner, the license until the taxes are paid up?
No.
No, you can't.
It, it's only delinquent taxes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Not late taxes, doesn't matter.
Because they could pay them by the October.
So, if he becomes delinquent, then you come back and say, we need to revoke his license?
I, well, he would have to be delinquent up until it's renewal time.
Okay.
So, right now, they don't have a license?
Right.
And they're supposedly not selling?
Right.
Well, let's make them legal.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of items three and four.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Then, three and four minute motion, then second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. We'll now recess County Board and go to the HRA. Called HRA Board Meeting to Order. Roll call.
Oh, come on.
Everybody's here.
Thank you.
We're good. Agenda, consent item number one, approve or amend the housing redevelopment authority meeting of August 5th.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Regular agenda. Turn it over to Jessica, sir.
Okay.
And I believe you all have this in front of you?
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
You have two resolutions for your consideration this morning, the first being the authorization for the issuance and sale of $22,085,000 in lease revenue bonds. This will be considered Series 2025A for the HRA. So, we did hold a bond sale yesterday morning. Happy to say that things went very well. As Monty pointed out, you do all have a copy of that sales summary in front of you. So, I'll just go through that very quickly. Of course, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me as we go. So, proceeds here will be used to finance, of course, the construction of the new county government center. And then, the bonds were also sized to include positive issuance for the bonds. We have a structure of 20 years here, with a call date beginning February 1 of 2033. So, at that point, you can call the bonds in, in whole or in part. In terms of security, the county will make lease payments to the HRA from any revenue available for the payment of the bonds. The bonds do not constitute a general obligation pledge of the county. That being said, it is the intention of the county to levy, of course, to collect those dollars to make payment to the HRA. The method of sale here was competitive. The bonds were underwritten by RW Baird. That is an underwriter of Milwaukee, so we saw three bids yesterday. All of them quite good. We did receive, of course, a rating on the bonds, with the rating being a double A minus, which is one notch below the county's typical rating of double A, and that's just due to the fact that there is no general obligation pledge here. All other outstanding debt for the county was affirmed at that double A level. And then, on the bottom here, you have just some information related to the final results of the bonds. So, we have a final par amount of $22,085,000. The HRA Board, and then the County Board, of course, will recall that the starting point was $22,725. The reason that we have this lower number here, $22,085,000, is because we received premium on the bonds. What that means is that investors are willing to give you cash today in order to receive a higher stated rate on the bonds, higher coupon. So, you end up paying a little bit more in interest, but you pay less in principal. So, we downsized the bonds, and then, of course, that interest rate is a little bit higher. When that occurs, we look at things on a true interest cost basis, so rather than just your average coupon, because again, that coupon is inflated due to the fact that you receive cash. And we have a final true interest cost here of 4.45%. What we had been planning for was about 4.63, so about 18 basis points lower. What that translates to in terms of total debt service for the county means that we're down about 592,000. It's 591,834,46, to be exact, so in, less in total principal and interest. That, of course, assumes that the bonds are outstanding for the full term, which we don't anticipate. But that being said, if that is the case, you're about $600,000 better. The next page is your bid tab, so this shows the bids that were received, of course, RW Baird out of Milwaukee being so big. You'll see that they did bid with the syndicate there, so we've got about 23 syndicate members that bid alongside Baird. And then, we also had Fidelity and RBC come in with bids as well. Considerably higher, about 11 basis points higher. What that kind of signals to us is that the syndicate with Baird was pretty strong, and of course, they were very interested in the county's bonds.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just note that all of them are below the projected.
All are, yes.
Was it 4.6 something?
4.63 is what we were estimating, yep. On the following page, you'll see the sources and uses. And then, what I draw your attention to here is the pricing summary that's in the middle of the page, and this, this gets to that premium bid. So, when we look at the third and fourth columns from the left, you'll see that the coupon there out through, let's see, 2036 is at 5%. But then, if we compare that against the yield that's in the fourth column, so that 5% coupon produces a yield of 2.51, and that is with that cash included in the bid. So, that's where we're seeing the yield to the county is actually, and that's why we look at it on a true interest cost basis, rather than average coupon, because we take into consideration the cash that's received at the time of sale. So, that's, again, while we're seeing the total par amount of the bonds reduced from the 22,725 down to the 22,085,000. We've got the debt service schedule on the following page. Due to that reduction in the true interest cost, you're looking at about $29,592 on an average basis, less for annual principal and interest than what we were planning for previously. And then, finally, you just have a couple of graphs that show the sort of snapshot of market interest rates. So, we're looking at, on page six, you'll see that five-year snapshot, and then, finally, on the last page, you'll see a 25-year flashback in terms of where interest rates have been over the last many, many years. With that, I will pause on that before we tackle the next resolution, the post-issuance compliance policy. Happy to take any questions on the bond sale process, et cetera.
Any questions?
Just great numbers.
Great.
My opinion.
Yeah, they were, they will be posted online. Actually, my son looked this morning, and they weren't posted yet.
Because you haven't awarded yet.
That's right.
Yep. And that's a good point, Commissioner. So, anything that's done by the HRA Board will need to be ratified by the County Board.
Yep.
Jessica, is your mic on? Just want to double-check. A little green, way down at the bottom, there's a green, a button for green. If it's green, it's on?
It's on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We're good, Chair. We're good.
Okay. So, then, the following item that you have is the post-issuance compliance policy and procedures. So, this was prepared by bond counsel, and really, what this gets to is that you're going to be using your proceeds for which they are intended, which, of course, is to construct a new government center, that you're not going to invest your proceeds at a yield that is significantly higher than what the tax-exempt bonds are issued for. And then, of course, with, in compliance with keeping investors up to date, that any sort of material events are posted, and so that investors can get the financial information, and again, any material event information from the board.
Jessica, this doesn't preclude us from, if we, when we receive the bonds, obviously, we're not going to be spending these dollars down right away.
Correct.
So, we're not precluded from receiving interest on those dollars as we proceed through the process?
No, not at all.
So, there's no arbitrage, arbitrage problems here?
Assuming that you're investing the unused proceeds for however long.
Exactly, yeah.
That they're less than that 4.45.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Chair, so we'd ask you, then consider the first action would be the resolution. And the TAF Law Firm has prepared final resolutions for Board Chair signature. What you had in your packet were draft, because obviously, the sale had not yet occurred. We have the final ones for, for Board Chair signature.
Okay.
So, something I would get to just in the motion is, the motion was based upon the original issuance amount, and instead, it's, correct if I'm wrong, Jessica, it's 22,085.
Correct.
So, in your motion, we have 22,725. If you could just please change that number to 22,085,000. And then, otherwise, the rest of the motion is fine.
Okay. Motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of $22,085,000?
Yes.
At lease revenue bonds, Series 2025A.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the resolutions for the issuance of the bonds. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none? Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed? Carried.
And then, lastly, sir, if you, if we could consider the post-issuance compliance policies and procedures?
Motion to adopt the post-issuance compliance policies and procedures.
Second. Motion's been made second to consider the post-issuance compliance policy and procedures. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Jessica.
Oh, great job.
She's got to cover the County Board items, so.
Oh, that's right.
So, we can go back to County Board, yep.
Right, well, turn the HRA and return to the County Board meeting.
Next, sir, we have, again, the resolution that's, as you see in your agenda item. Could you cover that one for us, Jessica? Yeah. What's that all about?
Commissioners, hello again. Now, you have.
You've been away so long.
You guys. So, we have another two resolutions for your consideration. The first resolution effectively concurs with the resolution that was just taken by the HRA to approve the award and sale of $22,085,000 in HRA lease revenue bonds, and authorizes the county, of course, to enter into the lease arrangement with the HRA. And then, from there, we have the second resolution that, again, authorizes those post-issuance compliance policy, and speaks to the fact that you'll use the proceeds of the bonds for the purpose in which they're intended, that you won't invest them at a rate that is materially higher than the interest rate on the bonds, et cetera, et cetera. Happy to take any questions.
I don't think there's no questions.
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing execution and delivery of a ground lease agreement, lease agreement and continuing disclosure undertaking all in connection with the HRA lease revenue financing of the government center project. Monty, in my motion, do I need to put in $22,850,000?
And I don't believe so. No, it's Jessica's second here. No, I think we're good. Yeah.
Yep.
That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to consider the resolution for execution and delivery of ground lease agreements and continued disclosure of undertake all connections with the HRA lease revenue of the government project. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And then, lastly, the, the post-issuance compliance policies, again, as County Board.
Sure, why not?
Sure, why not?
Motion to adopt post-issuance compliance policies and procedures.
Second. Motion's been made in second to consider the post-issuance compliance policies and procedures. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann Jessica.
Thank you.
Roxanne?
I know.
No.
We have Amanda's next.
Safe travels back.
Yep. Thank you again, Jessica.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
We are recontinuing our conversation from our July 15th County Board meeting, discussing the support of the Initiative Foundation's Region 7W U.S. Economic Development Administration application. This is, you wanted to have some time to talk to some, the commissioners in other counties, and give them some time to approve their respective resolutions as far as approving the Region 7W EDA application. And since our conversation on July 15th, Sherburne County approved the resolution to support this initiative on July 22nd, and Stearns County on July 29th. Wright County, however, did not entertain the resolution, did not add it to their agenda, so they are not supporting the application. We talked about that at the last meeting. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. We heard a presentation at the last meeting, but here to answer any questions that you have before moving forward with the support of this application.
Yes, go ahead.
So, Wright County is still able to participate even if they don't support it?
Correct. Technically, they will still be able to participate in the region group.
And you stated in our presentation before that there is a match for the counties.
Correct.
And that can be done through?
In kind.
In, in kind.
Staff, yep.
If we approve this and it goes forward, how do I want to word this? My question is that, is this like other boards where we're required to keep that up every single year? And could it change from in kind to dollar amounts passed on to our levy?
Perhaps. However, this resolution today is only to submit the application to the federal EDA. We will come back to the Board to discuss future funding of this organization. That, that's not the decision that you're making today. The decision you're making today is to support the application, that the Initiative Foundation is going to submit that application to federal EDA, to establish a ED district. And provided that they approve the application and approve our regional efforts, then we'll come back to the Board and discuss the funding mechanisms. Initially, the Initiative Foundation had, is receiving some grant funds to establish the district. They're going to be facilitating it, and then, the discussions have revolved around utilizing staff time as in-kind donations towards our contribution to continue running our ED district, our Region 7W district. So, in the future, there could be an opportu, well, there could be, the funding mechanism could change, but we just don't, we don't know how that's going to, we're still having conversations about how that is going to work. But realistically, we'd like to see that being more of in-kind contributions versus monetary contributions.
So.
Ultimately, it's still costing money, one way or the other.
And that's going to be through the Betton's.
Betton Economic Partnership.
BEP will provide the in-kind.
Exactly.
No county participation.
Now, if all of a sudden, these, these funds for, change from in kind to levy dollars, can we opt out at that point? Or are we stuck?
We, we haven't gotten that far in our discussions yet. This is just the application to approve it. So, we'll come back to County Board and discuss all of those other options.
Okay, thanks. I, I, when I was reading through this, I see that there is actually grants out there to support all of this for the funding to.
And the Initiative Foundation has applied for a grant to establish this organization.
So, is it, excuse me, Mr. Chair, is it fair to say, Amanda, then, if we approve the application going forward, we still have an opportunity to kind of review and see what's going? And also, my other question, Stearns, three to one, what was the Sherburne vote?
I don't have the minutes, but I believe that.
I thought that was unanimous.
I don't know if it was unanimous.
That's fine.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
But I know it was three to one.
One question I have, Amanda, is that I'm under the understanding that Wright wants to get out of this Region 7W, and they want to go with more the metro. Is that going to be something that's going to cause a rift? You know, if they, that's, that's what, they feel that they're more, they're better served coming out of the metro than they are coming out of St. Cloud area.
I can understand.
Yeah, and I can understand that. I, I don't know how that affects our district. I'm really not sure.
I mean, would they, would they consider redrawing the boundaries then, or would they?
I couldn't answer that question. I really just don't know how federal EDA determines that.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, in this, this particular, sorry, this particular case, you need three of the counties?
Correct. Yeah, the majority of the counties. Right.
Okay.
So, so if I'm understanding right, then if we approve this, and it comes back with all of the other stuff that we don't know yet, we can opt out, even though we approve this?
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to agree to move forward with it. We're just submitting the application, and then, we'll come back to County Board and talk about the funding mechanisms that kind of wrap yourselves into.
So, we can opt out completely after, if we go through with this?
If you, if the Board chooses.
Okay.
Yep.
That's.
As far as the funding mechanism goes, but it's really just the application to the point.
So, when we, when all the findings are in, and say they do something different, and we don't like it, we can opt out?
Essentially, yep.
I'll make a motion to support this, knowing that we will have an opportunity to look at it when it comes back through.
Second. Motion made and seconded to support the Initiative Foundation 7W Economic Development application. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Mr. Chair, if I can just be, I'd like to just make a quick statement before, I don't know if Amanda's sticking around or not, but I just want to give her kudos in front of you. Last week, her and Pam spent considerable amount of time trying to line up letters of support for the Highway 23 Coalition's feasibility study. We were under a very strict timeline and I reached out to Amanda and said, hey, do you have some contacts at these cities, et cetera, et cetera? And they stepped right up, especially Pam. I'm sure you were involved.
Yes.
And really helped us get that over the finish line. So I just want to acknowledge that.
Okay.
While she's here, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Every time, every time we ask for their help, they're right there.
They're right there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Roxanne?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chair. So the first item that I have, I'm going to pull this up, is a potential letter of support to support the neighbors in the R Mitchell Court area adjacent to where the Next Era project is located. The, let me, sorry, give me one second here just to pull that up so that I have the pictures available. So Next Era is planning to construct their solar project adjacent to what would be considered more of a rural neighborhood area. And this is probably one of the areas that's most densely populated in this, next to the Next Era project. Next Era did present to the Planning Commission their proposed screening plan at the July 24th meeting. We wanted to, and I think, I speak for the Planning Commission in that they wanted to see the screening plan before making any sort of decisions on whether to pursue something more in support of the neighborhood for enhanced screening. And when they presented the screening plan for us, yes, it met our requirements for screening while not requ, according to Next Era, they are required to meet the minimum screening standards, which it did, but in this situation, we felt that it was insufficient screening due to the nature of that area. And so I drafted a letter of support for enhanced screening for that area to, and including photos to indicate that the screening may not be sufficient for this area. So just to back up a little bit, here is the neighborhood that will be adjacent, and I wanted to show that right now it's bare field. It's not even, it wasn't even corn or anything there, so it's, it's very straight, flat area. So you can see that those areas do show quite well from the neighborhood. This shows the number of houses and their line of sight to the project area and where that will be seen. And then one of the neighbors actually pointed out a solar project in Sherburne County that has a berm, and it is very effective at screening the, the view from these residential houses. So this project is in Sherburne County. It's Haven Township, I believe is what it is. And you can see that there are residential houses along here, and the yellow circled area is a earthen berm. And so if you look at the berm on these photos, you would never know that there are solar panels behind it. Gets, it's, it's a little bit difficult to see just because of the scope of the area. And these, these pictures, while a little bit foggy that morning, you can, you can see that there is a very gentle berm and it effectively screens those solar panels. So in discussing with the neighbors, I think that would be something they'd be supportive of, is a berm for that area to protect the, the view shed of that location. So I've drafted a letter to Next Era and to the Public Utilities Commission, presented it to the Planning Commission last Thursday. They were supportive in signing that letter to send out supporting enhanced screening, effectively a, a berm for that location. They do have a public hearing scheduled at the Sock Rapids Government Center next, I believe it's the 26th, so is that Tuesday? And so I'd like to get this letter out and submitted to them before the end of that public hearing period, if the county board is supportive of that.
Mr. Chair? You know, I'm, I'm supportive of the berm and everything like that in this letter, but if this was a barn going across the road, we wouldn't be building a berm, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep. Yeah, and I think the, the idea behind this is you're, you're essentially putting an industrial use because of the size of the project in an agricultural area. There's no, a project of this scale would never fit in an industrial zone, yet it is an industrial type use. So we're putting that in our, in our ag district, our rural districts that you would expect to see housing and farms and buildings such as that.
Mr. Chair, as Roxanne said, the Planning Commission is unanimous in their feeling of putting forth this, this letter. As you know, we've got very limited opportunities as a county involvement in the Next Era project. And so kudos to Roxanne. She came up with this idea to, to be able to support the neighborhood, support the Planning Commission's thought about, you know, can we do something else? And we've, we've kind of been all sitting back until Next Era presented a screening option, right?
Mm-hmm.
And they finally did that in July. So then that was the response that we felt would be appropriate to try to support those neighbors in that particular area of rural housing that's going to be seeing this every day.
Roxanne, did it affect any of the area? Does it take away from the area that they are able to install panels on?
I can't speak to that because this will be something that they'll have to engineer. And this is not a requirement, it's simply a request.
It's a request.
On behalf of.
What does Next Era say about it? Are they fine with it, or?
They haven't.
The letter hasn't.
Okay.
Been presented to them. I do know that the neighbors have been in contact with Adam Garcia or Gracia.
Yeah.
And so he's aware that this is what they would like to see. I, I don't know that he's aware that we'll be submitting a letter to that effect.
Yeah, because he's certainly aware of their issues with.
Yep.
And because he's been at our Planning Commission meetings and county board meetings to hear it, so.
Yep. And they do want to appease the, the local government and the neighborhoods. This is the only area that we have heard from. So we're not, we're not asking for this for the entire project area, just this location.
Just so the housing, the people across the road don't think it's going to cover their second story.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
They'll still be looking at them.
Again, what they do is completely up to them.
To them, yeah.
Yep.
There is some, there is some in Sherburne County that does have trees on top.
They do. I, I know one, so I know I've been involved with this from the beginning and, and of course Commissioner Benoit has been with us, involved with the city of Sock Rapids when they came in. And that's what we did too, is made sure that they put a berm around certain areas. And they also do a screening thing, so somebody that's got a two-story house, if that glare is going into that house, they have to address that too.
And they put, in some of those, Steve and Terry, you've seen them, but they put sails up, like a sail type of thing up to block the glare.
Right. As Commissioner Johnson relayed, we don't have a lot of say in this anyway, but I did talk to our Sock Rapids Fire Chief the other day, and there's been now five fires in the other solar panel areas. And it's been a nightmare trying to get ahold of the owners because they change hands all the time.
I'm going to say, I think all five of those were amended.
Mm-hmm.
I'm pretty sure.
So just, just wanted to get that on the record and, and I told him I would, I would mention something, and I did. Not much we can do about it, but.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of a letter to the Public Utilities Commission, Next Era Energy, in support of additional screening in the location that was provided to us.
Second. Motion made and seconded to provide additional screening. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Okay. And I will make sure that this is tidied up. It's a draft right now. I do have to find more of the information on where to submit this to, and then I will bring it forward for signature prior to next Tuesday. I'll, I'll have to see, they might have an extended period where you can submit the comments versus what's just in person, so I'll, I'll make sure to get that out to everyone. Okay, go back on that. All right, so the next request is to transfer funds from the reserve fund to the restricted fund for the tax KAMA and Avenue support. So we knew that we would have to support both the tax, the Tyler system and the Avenue system for an additional period of time. We just didn't know how long that exactly would be. So we need to make a final transfer for $61,143 and then an additional $5,000 for the tax KAMA user group fee. So that is a transfer that should be the end of the contract with Avenue. And then there was an error in what we had originally started with, so that's an additional $64,000 that we're transferring. So a total of, it was originally a total of $130,000, but then we just got word that Tyler needs to build a tool to, for our tax statements because we're considered a cloud county where that information is stored in the cloud versus on, pulled from our network. And so there's a $4,800 fee associated with that. So we're looking to transfer $135,583 from reserves to the restricted fund.
Mr. Chair? Just for the record, this has been put aside, this money's been put in this, this reserve fund for a long time, knowing that this was coming.
The initial amount was.
Yeah.
Right, and then, obviously, this is additional for the reasons described by Roxanne, so.
It's got to be done.
I got asked the question, how did we come up with a shortage of $64,639.28?
That, the number that was provided to us was incorrect, so we, it was, there's a number that was out there that was set aside. Money had been pulled from that account and not calculated for.
The amount that was told you in the reserves was wrong?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Right.
So that was short of what was originally in there?
Yes. Yep. And I think it's provided in the report. There was. So it was still used for the tax KAMA project. It just was in, in error, that that wasn't deducted originally from the $266,000.
So is it fair to say that the tax and KAMA project came in over budget then, if we had this stuff put away?
It did, not necessarily over budget, but we, we knew that there was a chance that we would have to run the two programs concurrently. We just didn't know for how long. It all depended on when we could get up and into the Tyler program and how many counties removed from the Avenue system. And so, actually, to be fair, it's actually probably less than what was expected to run concurrently.
And are we the first cloud county they have?
I believe second, do you know?
Second, yeah. The county that really was the first.
Yep.
So they're just really honing in on issues that are coming up now.
Because of being a cloud county?
Yeah.
Are they at our expense in Otter Tales or not? That's the $4,800 building that tool? It's a good business plan.
Apparently.
Let everybody else pay and then they get to, yeah. Okay. Well, I guess we're kind of, we're kind of stuck anyway, so I'd move approval of the transfer of $135,583 from the reserve to the restricted fund for the tax KAMA conversion and Avenue support.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the needed funds from the reserves of $135,583. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for this conversion. I know you guys have been under a lot of added pressure.
Okay, Sandy?
My first item is asking for approval of the 2025 contract for the purchase of guardianship services with Guardian Solutions LLC. We currently contract with, I believe, four other vendors, and we're adding, wanting to add another option.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the contract for purchase of guardianship conservatorship from Guardian Solutions LLC. Any discussion? You said we have two or three other ones?
Yeah, I believe we have four other ones. So this just gives us more selection in who provides the guardianship. It's not more money. It's the exact same contract we would do with all the providers. It just gives us other options. If people don't have openings, that type of thing.
I think in, in this, more options is better.
Yes.
Exactly.
So does this, does the money come from the people that use the service?
Sometimes, sometimes if the, if the people have, have money, they do pay for it, and sometimes the county ends up paying for guardianship.
And we get reimbursed?
We get some small reimbursement, but no, the majority of the money is county funds. We've discussed this at previous board meetings. I don't know the, what our budget amount is, but it has been slightly a growing service over time as families are long distance, are distant, are wishing to be uninvolved or are uninvolved. There's a problem in many counties, but we do seek relatives whenever possible, but there are times when an individual can't make their own decisions and are living in substandard situations and the county needs to step in.
So do you watch the conservatorship, the person that's doing it? That they're doing their due diligence? Is somebody watching them? Because I have a little personal information on this now.
We try to. I mean, we, we monitor the bills. We are often involved with the clients and then also, not always, though. And there are also reports that need to be submitted to the court regularly. So the court also has an eye on it. They have a better eye on it now than they used to. They used to not do a lot with some of the people who didn't file the reports, but there's more and more requirements. Actually, and that makes it harder, harder for guardians as well. So for some family members, it's the paperwork that has become, that's required by court that has become difficult, and that's one of the reasons sometimes they back out. But there are, there are some oversight of it, but not intense.
Mr. Chair, Sandy, I'm sure it's all over the board, but is there a typical cost of guardianship that you would say?
Yes. I don't remember exactly what it is. I believe it's like $125 a month.
Okay.
Somewhere in there. So they don't do a lot with, I mean, they do more paperwork signing, more of that, and then do some visits with the clients, but there are not a lot of hands-on. It is not their job to move the client, to take them to medical appointments or grocery shopping. It's more of a legal entity to make legal decisions that they are unable to make.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Motion second, I think.
Yeah, we got a motion and second.
I think so.
We do.
Okay.
Call the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And then the next item is an item that we have covered in a couple of committee of the whole meetings, but we would like the board to establish, to approve a position within human services to be the mental health co-responder with law enforcement. Funds, funding for this would be covered by the opioid settlement funds and by the Community Adult Mental Health Initiative. It is not levy funds.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think in our committee of the whole, we talked about doing a trial period on this, but I think we all agree that this trial period probably is going to turn into a much needed avenue down the road. But I, I think from my standpoint, this is a no-brainer and, and it's working in other places.
Mr. Chair, I would have to agree with Commissioner Gopinski, especially in St. Cloud. It's been known to work very well.
And Commissioner Benoit and myself talked to Mayor Anderson. And Commissioner Benoit and myself talked to Mayor Anderson of St. Cloud, and they said if we want additional support on this, they have opioid funds too that they could very well, um.
He'd be willing to entertain.
Entertain, yep. At least a presentation from us.
Yeah.
Well, that would be actually very beneficial, especially when most of it's gonna happen.
On their side.
Southeast St. Cloud.
Yep. So I think, I think if we could get a meeting together, that would be good.
I believe that our plan has been, however, that they already have co-responders in St. Cloud and that this co-responder would focus on the rest of Benton County. That was our initial plan. So the Benton County rural areas, Sock Rapids, that area that does not have a co-responder. But that would certainly be a discussion we could have as well. But that was our thoughts, is that there already are city of St. Cloud co-responders.
But as soon as we put a co-responder on, I will guarantee you they'll pull back that area because Benton County has one now. So either way, I think we need to have a meeting with them and just explain the, the avenue, what we're doing and what, what they're doing and make sure that there's no, we'll call it underlap.
So, so that we're working together instead of apart.
Mr. Chair, Sandy, I, I wasn't at the committee of the whole meeting. I missed that information, but the ninety-eight thousand annually between opioid and, uh, the other funds, is it half and half? Is it mostly opioid?
It's mostly opioid and it'll, it, it will change over time as well, depending on where Kami. Kami also supports our outreach worker. Currently, we have a PATH grant that's covering the majority of that cost, so we haven't needed Kami funding, but it may have to be a balancing act to fund both as we.
You need more Kami funding, rely more on the opioid.
Correct.
With that, I'll make the motion to hire mental health co-responder services to be funded by opioid settlement Kami funds.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy.
Sandy, are you gonna be sticking around for after it all? Because I think in maybe our commissioner updates, we might have some homeless talk.
Um, I was headed to St. Cloud at ten-thirty.
Okay.
But I could join in virtually or I'm not sure when you'll be.
Well, hypothetically, would the chair have a problem just updating our, all of our meetings on that? Real quick?
I don't have it.
I mean, uh, after our APO meeting, I, I sat in on, um, Pastor Carroll and a presentation with a few county members and, and city St. Cloud. And it, they, obviously, everybody's looking for counties to step in and, and fund all this stuff. The city is like, yes, we can, we can step in and help out too, but everybody's like, well, we keep building it and they'll keep coming.
Correct.
We're just, we're funding our own problem. Cause Brain, I brought up the fact that Brainerd and Fargo have already stopped. We know that other counties are bringing them to our doorstep. And the more we keep building and funding this, this issue without having a collaborative effort to support the fun, the, the funds of it, we're gonna have our own issue coming even bigger. We can't put a fence around and say, we're taking care of this group of people. It doesn't work that way. So there was, there was a, I, 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 our meeting was probably forty-five minutes to an hour and you guys had one on Monday, correct?
We have one with faith and, faith and housing and they, I got the impression Scott was there with me, but I got the impression that they, the faith community wants to pull back from housing over the winter and they want a solution from the counties and the cities as to where to house those people instead of in the churches.
Right. One thing I picked up on from that meeting yesterday was that group was reaching out to city officials to lessen their zoning requirements so that it's not such a fight to do something. But then the problem that we've discussed in the past is because we don't control any city ordinances. If they choose to build or expand on this side of the river, we kind of become on the hook for this stuff as Benton County. So there's this back and forth, you know, as they're reaching out, trying to close down their transit, their temporary housing for the winter, now they want the city to release their zoning regulations so they can move forward. And it's kind of a, I don't know that that's the answer.
No, it's not the answer.
You know, it, it's pretty ironic because Sandy and I have been on numerous meetings over the last, I don't know, four, five, six years. And it's the same thing that you guys are bringing up now, same issues. So we haven't gotten anywhere, you know, with this.
And it was, it was very clearly stated in our meeting that the better the services are, the more are common. Because they're hearing about it. And, and Pastor Carroll even admitted that she's getting calls from Mississippi and Chicago. And people from down south are coming, making calls right now to say, I'm coming up in September. And she's like, uh, it's winter up here coming up. So I don't know. I think, I think a collaborative effort needs to be put together and we need to make sure our faith communities understand that the, the bucket's empty.
Yep.
We'll take care of people, but.
To be honest with you, I think that, I, I mean, the takeaway I got is even some commissioners from outlying areas kind of made that pretty clear in yesterday's meeting. Isn't that what you kind of got, Scott?
Yep.
Um, they made it pretty clear that it, it, it is not going to come from
Yep.
the government entities, I think is what I read it as.
And one commissioner went so far as to say, if you're gonna rely on government for all of this, it's gonna be a problem. So it's not gonna get fixed just like that.
So. Well, and if the ordinary, if the, if the taxpayers knew what we spend on a homeless person out of taxpayer money, I think people would be extremely shocked at this. And, you know, the Commissioner Johnson and I had a talk the other day about the Avivo deal, the shortfall there. And it's like, they say they're not bringing anybody from Minneapolis, but we've heard.
Yeah.
We've heard that they're bringing people from Minneapolis. I think they're gonna do whatever fills the doors and get the money coming in.
Well, I did attend a meeting last week or the week before with Avivo when we were talking about the referral source. And what we discussed with the three counties and the city of St. Cloud and Avivo was that referrals would come from our outreach workers. So they would come from our
Good.
three county outreach workers. Now whether or not though, people come up and move into tents in our counties and then become our issue and then become, go to Avivo, that's, I mean, I, I can't say that. But the idea is not to transfer people directly from the metro to Avivo here, that we would be the gatekeepers was the discussion in our last meeting with Avivo.
Yeah.
Just to give you a little history of this, I know there's a little town down south that created a whole block of transitioning housing. At the beginning of that whole block, it's a homeless shelter and then it just positions into an apartment complex. Okay, they go through a lot of steps. They spent a lot of money and they still have the same problem. They still have the same problem with homelessness. And I just can't figure it out.
Mr. Chair, Sandy, do we have access or do we see financial statements from Place of Hope, Lincoln Center, Salvation Army? So we can see where their grant dollars are coming and flowing from. We don't see bank statements. We don't see reconciliations. So we're offering dollars, tax dollars to support these things without any good fiduciary tie to what they're doing with it.
I don't know that we offer them our tax dollars at this point in time. As far as I know, we do pay GRH funds towards some beds at Salvation Army, but at least from human services budget, there is nothing that comes out of human services towards the shelters.
Right. But once they're identified as a resident of Benton County, where are those dollars coming?
Well, then we do end up paying their services for other things they might need. They do gain residency in the shelters that are in Benton County and same would be said in Stearns County as well. They gain residency in the shelters.
So when they become a resident, how, what's that timeframe? Twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours in Benton County?
It depends on if they've applied for services previous to entering the shelter, but if they apply in the shelter for the first time, they are our residents immediately. If they applied previously, they transfer in sixty days.
So if I'm at Place of Hope and something changes significantly at Lincoln or Salvation Army and I move over there, whose responsibility am I?
If you are already on assistance while you're at Place of Hope, you will remain that county's responsibility for sixty days. And if you are not and you apply, once you arrive in Benton County, you will become Benton County's.
Forever?
For as long as, as long as you remain in Benton County or in an excluded time facility.
Once you've applied and received that, now if you decide to go back to Place of Hope, then what?
Then they, if you, if you applied in Benton County and you go back to Place of Hope, you are Benton County's for two months unless you move back to Benton County.
So this could go back and forth.
It could go, it goes back and forth all of the time, all of the time. That's one of our problems. I mean, the homeless outreach workers have done a really good job with this because this happens all the time. But we do struggle in counties with this all of the time with case management and things like that. They go, we switch back and forth quite frequently.
One, one of the things that I would like to find out is how many central Minnesota counties have facilities like this? Because I was told a lot of counties do not have facilities like this. And therefore it makes it easier to put them, put people on a bus, bring them by squad car, wherever, and drop them off, which we've heard counties do. And I, I have a heart, you know, it's not that I don't want, I, I don't wanna take care of these people or anything like that. We'll take care of our homegrown.
Yeah.
But not transplanted. And as heartless as that sounds, if we could put a fence around, you know, we could take care of our own deal, but we can't take care of Wright County's problem. We can't take care of Sherburne County's problem.
Crowing.
Crow, everybody. We, we just can't do it because it's falling on the, the billfolds of everybody in, in our counties here. So.
It's a double-edged sword.
Yep.
It's a, it goes both directions. It's, it's tough.
Sometimes you think about the county that does nothing as better off.
It, you, it, as heartless as that sounds, and, and Mike Conway and I were on the same page. It's like, all these people that bring in one, I'm like, I just wanna call them up and say, listen, we're not sending anybody to you. The next one that comes here, you're gonna get twelve coming back.
Well, or if he didn't, if he didn't do anything, they wouldn't come here.
Yeah.
Well, although we have a lot of other, just, I mean, we have a lot of other services that attract people to the St. Cloud metro area as well. I mean, we have the VA, we have Centra Care, we have, we have a lot of services that you can't get in a rural, small town as well. So beyond our shelters, there are a lot of other things that attract people to St. Cloud.
Yeah. It's a problem that's not gonna go away.
No.
Well, and here, and, and this is just my thoughts, but the, the, the issue is we need to get to the underlying problem because these people coming back year after year, looking for winter housing because they're on the streets and it's sometimes the same people. Am I correct, Sandy?
Yes.
We need to figure out how to get them help and how to get them acclimated back into the community instead of some of these places are, are, what do I wanna call it?
Enabling.
Yeah. Enabling the situation, which just keeps continuing to be the same old problem. We need to get to the bottom, to the root and figure out how to fix it from the bottom, not just.
Give shelter.
Well, Commissioner Benoit, he gets back to is government the solution all the time? The government's gotta be the solution and it's the double-edged sword, right? You know, back in the day, it was family, church, and government was on the bottom and that's completely swapped. Now everything's the government's problem to fix. And the family doesn't want anything to do with it. The big C church doesn't want anything to do it and it flows to the government. And now we're trying to, the government's trying to fix the government's problem.
The biggest problem we're having is the length of stay. Okay, because it's known that it's gotta be over a hundred and twenty days just for that individual.
To make a change.
To make a change. And even then it's, we don't even know. So, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sandy, most stays in certain areas are only thirty days anyway. Okay, so you're not helping the solution that way.
Right. And that has been the recommendation several times to change the length of stay.
And then we need facilities for that, that are gonna help them.
This is gonna be significant with the faith community stepping back this winter now.
Oh, it's gonna be huge.
Seven or eight churches that were identified that really are not gonna be able to allow that this winter, which we're talking basically two months.
Well, sorry to get everybody on the tangent on that.
Well, and, and, yes, in yesterday's meeting, I, I mean, it was even brought up that, you know, some of them wanted the government tenants to open up their buildings and allow their lobbies to be used for, for bedding, beds and that kind of stuff and/or private companies that have empty buildings to allow them to put beds in there. I mean, realistically, they're not gonna allow that to happen.
No.
You know, I, I don't know.
I'm glad you guys are getting involved.
Alright, that's all.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Chris?
Okay, Chris.
Alright, I have an exciting slate of items for you to discuss today.
And we're gonna put a few more on your plate too.
Alright, if you just allow me a moment here to bring it up. My chair? Perfect. Okay. The first item for you for consideration is, oh my goodness, uh, uh, bridge replacement grant for the County Road fifty-one and Casada twenty-two bridges. If you recall, we did receive some federal money for those bridges. They also became eligible for state bridge grant replacement funds. And, and so this agreement, if approved today, would allow MINDA to disperse those funds through us. And I just wanna scroll through the agreement to the funding breakdown in here. So this is basically what it is. We're getting LBRP, Local Bridge Replacement Program, through the motor vehicle lease sales tax grant. So that's, that's the funding source of those. And, and that's significant because sometimes the local bridge replacement program is funded through state bonding. And when there's state bonding, funding those programs, there's additional provisions that we have to include in our bidding packets and things like that. So the motor vehicle lease sales tax is what's funding this portion of the grant for that. And between the two bridges, that's nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents. And that's based on our low bid awarded amount. So any of those that, that attend the MICA meetings, whenever you hear the motor vehicle lease sales tax discussion between the metro and greater, that's why we pay attention to that sometimes because we don't want them messing with that percentage that goes to, uh, uh, bridge, local bridges and, and roads. So just wanna throw that in there. Just to recap too, between the two bridge projects, uh, there's the breakdown for the fifty-one bridge and then the Casada twenty-two bridge. So a little bit over a million and a half of federal funds plus the nine-seventy-nine thousand of the state funds. It does leave, where's that, there's it is, a local match between the two projects of three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and seventy-two cents, which is significantly less than what was identified and set aside in our adopted five-year road construction plan. So accompanying this applica, or the, the agreement, well, there's the application when I first applied for the funds, is a resolution. So it is my county engineer's recommendation to approve the resolution and authorize board chair signatures on the grant agreement.
So moved.
Motion made in second to accept the grants for Casada twenty-two and County Road fifty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Good job on that.
Yep.
Alright, well, thank you for approving that. Okay, the next item is another agreement. And, and this gets a little bit more complicated. So this is for the pedestrian railroad crossing in Rice. As you recall, they received a transportation alternatives grant for that. And that's a federal program that comes through us. Normally, we get those funds after we go through a low bidding process or sealed bid process, award a contract to the lowest responsible bidder, have them do the work, pay them for the work, then seek reimbursement. Here's the twist. Since we're dealing with the Burlington Northern Railroad, there is certain items that only they can do within their railroad tracks. Those happen to be eligible for this grant, but that, paying for those is outside of the sealed bid process. So we need to have this agreement between Benton County and the state known as a force account agreement. Normally on construction projects. Normally, on construction projects, force accounts come when you are negotiating with a contractor and you can't agree on what the price of that work is. So you go to force account or time and materials. You make the contractor, uh, submit invoices based on their time and the materials purchased. So that's kind of what we're doing here, is we will have an invoice from BNSF of the costs of their work for the pedestrian crossing within their tracks. We'll have to pay that to BNS, BNSF, and then through this agreement, seek reimbursement of those costs, um, uh, from MINDOT for that grant. Based on what BNSF has already given us, uh, it's estimated about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. Eighty percent of that is, is eligible, uh, or a hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents. The additional would be the City of Rice costs.
Okay. Do they know that?
Yeah.
Thank you for that question.
Uh, yes, that's part of the administrative agreement that we signed with them. Anything, it wasn't as specific, uh, as a, you know, just distinguish between a force account agreement and the normal construction agreement. But the language in our agreement with Rice says, anything above what the federal grant covers is their, their costs. So, the way it's working, we'll pay the contractor, um, we'll seek reimbursement of the federal funds, and then we'll invoice the City of Rice for anything additional o- of that. So, um, i- it's one of those things, I hate to feel like we're being forced into this, but, um, tha- that's kind of what it is. Without this agreement, there's railroad work that only BNSF will do, that there'll be no means to, to pay for it without this. So a lot of legal mumbo jumbo in here. I shouldn't say that, but a lot of stuff in there. Basically, to get a hundred and three thousand dollars to pay BNSF for, for that work, uh, I'm recommending authorizing a board chair on this. There's also a resolution that accompanies this agreement a- as well.
At least it's not a million dollars from Excel.
That's true. And then BNSF has probably got as much
Yeah.
authority as what Excel does.
They do. You know, I, I know it's stated in the agreement, Chris, I'm, I'm just kind of curious, you know, when Rice sees this twenty-six thousand dollars, they're going to have to pay for the, you know, pay for that, what they're going to say.
I think they're well aware of it.
Well, they're well aware of twenty percent, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I mean.
Public health worked real hard to get some of these grants for this thing.
Yeah, and that's basically what it is. The grant is covering eighty percent of the BNSF work, so I think it's all co- I mean, we wouldn't even be he- here today if they hadn't got that grant.
Right.
And that's been a lot of years Rice has been looking for solutions to get pedestrians across the railroad tracks. So, all said and done, I mean, we're looking at about similar costs, just construction wise, which the plans are advertised right now. We're planning on having a bid opening September fifth for this work. But, um, yeah, that's always been the understanding I think Rice has had, is that federal grants typically only pay eighty percent of the total, uh, construction costs, so.
I'll move approval to adopt the attached resolution and authorize county board chair to sign on a MINDOT agreement number one zero six zero seven four one.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to ad- adopt the res- attached resolution for with MINDOT agreement one zero six zero seven four one. Any other discussion?
Yes. Chris, how long have we been working on this project? Two, three years?
Oh, Jenny, Jenny's.
Yeah, so.
I think Nicole was here when they, they started.
Yeah, I want to say it's almost been four years, so, um.
Man.
Hopefully by this fall, we're all done with it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a, I mean, cost wise, as far as what we deal with road construction and, and it's a very, it's a low cost project, but it's, has a lot of overhead time associated with this, with this federal grant, the, the special provisions that are required, whether it's a DBE required or not, um, there's a lot of things that go into it. There's a lot of strings attached to federal funding, usually.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post Kerry.
Great, thank you. We'll just move right along. So the next item I bring before you is, uh, consideration of consultant services for in-service bridge inspection. So these are the bridges that have been constructed years ago that we're subject to inspect every year, every two years, or some of them maybe every four years. Out of the hundred and, one hundred and twelve structures that we inspect in Benton County, um, there are fifty-nine that are due this, this year, that we have to inspect. What's critical, and MINDOT, or I should say Minnesota in general, i- is really good about our bridge inspections. We, we take bridges seriously, um, in, in this state, and that's a good thing. We're really strict on the inspection dates of these, and you see this far right column, this is a list of the bridges that are, need to be inspected this year. Due to the number of bridges and the dates of when the inspections are due, we just don't have the capacity to do all of them ourselves. So, we were seeking some consultant help with just inspecting these. Not all of them, uh, but we were hoping that they could inspect about twenty-nine out of the fifty-nine, uh, of them. So about half of the, the bridges, we'd like to, to go forward with, with STANTEC, and that, these are the ones that are highlighted in, in yellow
That's crazy.
here. So, um, this is something that's just tasked with county highway departments that, uh, that, that we have to do.
What happens if you, what happens if some of them just get kind of whoops next year?
Uh, w- we, we face a lot of scrutiny. We could lose funding for bridges. Uh, they would start looking at, you know, some of the things that we just approved, like our bridge grant for place bridges. That's all predicated on we're up to date with doing our inspections, we were tracking the deterioration and things like that. Um, if we're not doing a good job of that, they could say, does it relieve you of your responsibility to maintain a safe bridge? It just may eliminate you from receiving outside funding to, to do that maintenance and repair work on those bridges.
Point taken.
It's, it's what I joke is called the golden rule. Whoever has the gold makes the rules. So if we're wanting some of the state's gold, we sometimes we have to follow their rules, or even the federal's gold. Um, when we first started negotiating with, uh, this consultant, I want to find their fee here and point this, this out. Oh, it's after the, the bridge list. That's where I need to go. They were proposing, uh, a fee of about, uh, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars, and we looked at what they were proposing to do with that. Some of it involved a, a, a bridge inspector and assistant. We went back to them and say, hey, if we provided one of our staff to help you assist that, would that reduce the number of billable hours? Uh, they looked at that and said, yes. So they did re- in between the time that we submitted, that I submitted my agenda item and, and now, they did bring that down to twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So that's what I'm asking board approval, is to enter an agreement with STANTEC for bridge services, uh, for a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. It is, uh, something we have, uh, we have budget for, for this year to, to, to accomplish this.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Question, if they're doing half these bridges for twenty-five grand, we're supplying one, is there a way of freeing up the person that's going to do the other half to do more important things and then do this for fifty grand? You, you see where I'm, because we're doing, we're doing half of them, right?
Correct, yeah.
It, you know, if we got them down to twenty-five grand on the first half, could they do the second half for the other twenty-five grand with one of our help and free up one of our people to do something that we're looking at, you know, outsourcing that could be, uh, more savings to the county? If that makes sense. Because they're, they're engineers, right?
Well, yeah, so the other one would be, uh, our assistant, uh, Mark Lloydell, has the, the qualifications and certifications to inspect these, and, and the intent is we would use our engineering technicians to inspect with them because of the, they need to be inspecting bridges for four years before they're eligible to get to that status and stuff. So, um.
I, I'm just looking at for thirty bridges roughly for Mark to go out and do. Is there better money spent
On him.
On him, on other projects that we're maybe subbing out, that we can use a higher level and, and save that, and then do these bridges outsourced with our engineering techs?
I think, would you, are you suggesting that we still supplement their staff with our staff? Because that's, that's going to be kind of important. We want to get our staff
Yeah.
experienced, so four years down the road, we're not even talking about this either.
Correct.
So, um, I guess we could, we could, uh, to discuss that with them.
It's not that I want to give them more money, but we talked about how short we are over the next year, you know, few years. I'm just wondering if there's more, if there's better things we can be doing, having Lloydell do.
Well, I guess the other question is, has Mark done any of the thirty he was going to do?
Well, no, because they're, not yet, because they're due in September. Some of them are, you need to start inspecting them in September.
First on the September, okay.
So, um, I mean, what we'd have to do is go back and, and just, I guess, negotiate with that, with them.
I mean, if it doesn't make sense, don't do it, but if, if all of a sudden, we can put Mark on something that's more important, or is a better value.
Return on his time, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I'm open to that idea. Due to the timing, uh, I wonder if the board would consider going ahead and approving this with the option to go ahead and increase to maximize our efficiency with, uh, all of our duties that we need to accomplish.
Absolutely. No, that, that, that sounds good.
I don't think the intent is to stall you out.
No.
No, no.
We have another opportunity here.
So, Chris, on the average, how long does it take to inspect a bridge?
Um, yeah, so.
I, I know I read it and seen it, but.
Maybe half a day a bridge? So, I mean, I think we're looking at, you've got the inspection time out, actually out there on the bridge, and then you got to come back in
And write the report.
I didn't include that. Actually, complete an inspection report. That's what I wanted to attach. That could be another hour of time of just typing in everything that you collected, measurements and stuff, uh, out in the field, um, and, and
Teen days.
putting that into the computer. Then still, it doesn't resolve me of any of my responsibilities. As the county's bridge program administrator, I still have to find time, um,
At least.
this fall to review all fifty-nine of these inspection reports. I thought this, this kind of had, uh, some time in there.
But.
Broke that down.
We might be.
So, what I remember just in the conversations was three to four hours per bridge. So, that's where, when you have multiple bridges due within a, a week, i- it does make it tough to, to as, I think as a staff, when we looked at this, we're trying not to be greedy and just have it all farmed out. We're trying to just see what we can do to augment our own staff, but.
And I get the experience, you know, because they've got to gain that experience, too.
Yeah.
Before they can get licensed.
Yeah.
But, but I do share the point with Commissioner Gopinski that if we can better serve Mr. Lloydell's time somewhere else, it probably would make sense, because you're going to have those other people on site anyway, your other engineers on site anyway, to gather that experience.
Yeah.
Looking at eight hundred and sixty-five bucks a, a bridge on the contracted outside.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Uh, I have had to do this before, when we were, before we had an assistant engineer that could do these bridge inspections, and I would say that was probably eight years ago. It was only about five hundred dollars a bridge. So it's another one of those escalation things. So, that sounds about right, because originally, when it was thirty-three thousand, I was thinking it was over nine hundred dollars a bridge. So we brought that down a little bit.
I'm just saying, by, by doing it this way, we're still getting our techs the experience
Mm-hmm.
to do it.
Yep.
So, just a thought.
Mark, or, uh, I see we're responsible for all the bridges, even on the township roads, right?
That is correct. Yep.
So they get a free ride, kind of?
Thank you for bringing that up.
Correct, yeah. Um, and that's something that is actually in Minnesota statute. It says, uh, the county engineer is responsible for the safety inspection of their, their structures. Now, maintenance wise, we have a duty that if we inspect it and we see something in their report, we need to inform them of that and strongly encourage them to, to address that maintenance issue. If they don't address it, there, I think we have some mechanisms to get that work done, but, um.
So is there?
We're not responsible for the maintenance costs, but certainly the inspection costs of it.
So is there any in statute saying that we cannot throw some of that cost over to the townships, being it's a township bridge?
Yeah, I think, I think there is.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a practice. I don't know if there is or isn't, I guess, off the top of my head.
I'm not trying to stir the pot here. I'm just asking the question.
Yes, you are, Commissioner.
Sometimes it's not a bad idea just to remind them of some of the services we already provide, maybe?
Yeah.
I get that.
Um, but you're right. I mean, ta- inspecting township bridges on a hundred and fifth street recently, Maywood Township, that's where we identified that needed, and we went to work and got a grant and, and used township bridge funds to, um, I mean, a half a million dollar structure, the township was out twenty thousand dollars and got a half a million dollar structure built, so.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, so the good, good discussion, if the board's open to that idea, is just to go ahead and approve us working with STANTEC, and then we'll keep discussing with them of increasing that to do more, if not all of them, um, and, and let us manage our staff time.
And, and my conversation, it was not to just alleviate workload off a, your group. I'm just saying, if there's better places that he could use the time and money that we're not contracting out over there.
Yeah.
Let's do it. If it's just going to free up time instead of, and, and pay out more, then I guess I'm not for that.
Right, yeah.
That's what I want to make clear. But I would, I would move approval of entering in the STANTEC, uh, to complete in-service bridge inspections for the twenty-nine, and it was at twenty-five thousand.
Four twenty-nine.
Four, four twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Second. Motion's been made in second to enter into an agreement with STANTEC for, uh, bridge inspections. Any other discussion?
Well, and I just kind of want to feed off of what Jared said, as lo- as long as we're making sure that we're not just freeing up time, and that if Mark's time can be spent elsewhere at more of a cost savings than those other ones that need to be done, then we need to look at that. But if it's going to be not a cost savings in wherever you're putting them with this amount, then I wouldn't even look at those other bridges.
Understood.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So Kerry.
All right, well, that completes the, the action items. Now.
Well, that was brief.
Uh, sit back and relax. I wanted to give you kind of an update on road construction projects, uh, from this, this year. So, um, not a lot of text, just some, just wanted to show some pictures. Uh, Cassaw Three and Five in Gilman is very much under construction. Uh, they've been doing sanitary sewer. They've completed all the sanitary sewer installation on our County Road Three between twenty-five and five, and they're working on Three north of Five, um, now. And when I say they complete between twenty-five and five is, yeah, the main is in, all the connections to service lines are in. They're hoping next week to start the storm sewer, which is our pipes, and, um, keep progressing with that. So that's just, that's kind of what the road looked like, uh, last week when I was out there. They were actually, at the time that I was out there installing sanitary sewer on, I think this is a hundred and third, so this is a, a city of Gilman Street, uh, their costs for that. And that's just a, a picture of them backfilling the trenches or continuing to, to move forward with the pipe installation. One thing that we've had to address is, uh, sump pumps. A lot of sump pumps just drain to the curb. Some of them were draining underground to, they had, somebody had made connections to storm sewer in the past. Well, when you tear all that out, where's that water going? And we've got plenty of water this year, so we've made some temporary connections, um, to their sump lines, and there's just, what we're doing now is just directing that water away from where they're working and, and what we're going to do, we're going to make some permanent connections as part of the project, um. And we, we don't want residents to be discharging that water into the curb line anymore. We're going to put some pipes in there where they can connect to it underground. Um, we're going to put, uh, some pipes in there. They'll have to make the connection from their house to that, that pipe that we're burying that ultimately connects into the storm sewer at the next structure. So, um, that's kind of how we're going to handle that, that permanently, and then rely on the le- the, the homeowners to make, kind of like the connection themselves on, on their side after that. Kind of Road Forty-three and Sixty-Six Mill and Overlay project, that's complete. But I don't know if anybody knew that we had some bridge work o- on this project. County Road Forty-three Bridge over Elk River. We milled all that batuminous surface off of the bridge deck, and one of the things that we had to do on this bridge is replace the grout and place some waterproofing membrane over the joints between the bridge beams. These have like, they look like the shape of the letter T, uh, underneath, and every time that those meet, there's a little bit of a gap there. These have like, they look like the shape of the letter T, uh, underneath, and every time that those meet, there's a little bit of a gap there. Bituminous pavement is not a hundred percent waterproof. Water can get through there, and we don't want that salty water that we put on the roads in the winter to get down into the concrete and corrode the, the reinforcing steel. So, that's just something that we, we do when we have these projects, remove that bituminous, have the contractor remove that grout, replace the grout, put a waterproofing, uh, membrane on that, and then pave over it. That's what that looks like underneath. So, you've got these, all these beams underneath. We're trying to keep that, that joint waterproof. Water would, if it was open, water would seep down in there, and then has a tendency to stay adhered to the structures and just run down the structures, and over time, that could eat away the concrete and the reinforcing steel under it. That's what it's looked like. So, we had to, we did that, closed that over a weekend back in June, um, allow that curing time of that grout and that waterproofing membrane, and then on Monday, pave that back in even with the roadway on either side of the bridge, and then came through with the overlay on all the project after that. Here's a portion of the sixty-six reclaim, just a picture of the reclaim, reclaim machine as it goes through. That's what that material looks like after the second pass of that. It does a really goo- these machines do a really good job of getting it to almost like a class-five gradation just out there on the road. You didn't have to haul material off, crush it, bring it back. It does it right out there on the road. Then we blade and compact that and pave on top of that. Sixty-six on the portion where we had those tree stumps, the infamous tree stumps, so this is what we did this time, where we milled through that. Contractors still had about ten stumps to remove in that section where we have removed countless numbers before. And what we did, we installed, this is called a geo, uh, uh, a geo-grid instead of a geo-textile. So, this has a lot higher tensile strength than the woven fabric. So, our theory is that we'll see over time, if it proves right, that if there are still stumps buried that we didn't see during the reclaiming process and are still working their way up, they'll hit this geo-grid layer, and since it has a higher tensile strength, it won't be able to punch through that. Our concern with the traditional woven geo-textile, that is, it's much like a fabric. Once you get a hole, poke a hole through your shirt, that'll just continue, as you're putting pressure on it, continue unraveling. That won't happen with a material like this. So, when, through the reclaim, at the bottom of that, that aggregate layer, we put this geo-textile layer on there to keep the stump from punching through that. We did replace all the, the entrance pipes, uh, on that project as well. This is something kinda unique, kind of a cost savings thing, a way for maintenance to acquire some millings, which are very beneficial in maintenance work, whether it's slopes, roadway slopes, driveway approaches and things like that. In the milling operation, and as the, in the bidding documents, we told the contractor, when you're bidding this, we're gonna take eight hundred tons of your millings for our own use. And so, we coordinated, uh, uh, with our maintenance, and on the day that they were milling, we just had our trucks ready and just get into the line of their milling trucks, and then hauled it back to, to our yard. So, trucks haul about ten yards apiece, so, um, eight trucks we got, or eighty trucks, I should say, to get our eight hundred tons of that. No, I said, I said that wrong, tons, not yards. So, we got about eight hundred tons of that. Um, and that was just kinda bid in, into the project like that, so. The remainder of the millings, the contractor got to keep, and they use that as recycled material in the new, uh, bituminous mixture that goes on the roadway, so. Casaw seven reconstruction, um, I don't have any recent pictures, but I did wanna show this. This is a video that we took back in May when we were paving that first mile and a half from the south. So, as you're watching this video, just the update on that, we did revise the calendar completion date to August fifteenth, which obviously passed on Friday. Uh, they're still out there working. Their goal is to start paving this Thursday. They have six days worth of paving. They plan on working Saturday as well and finishing up all the paving next Wednesday. Um, we believe that the contractor's intention is to get that road completely open before Labor Day weekend, but there's a lot of work even after you pave it. Um, we wanna get shoulders on it, or the gravel shoulder, so you don't have that edge drop off. We'd like to get some of the safety signs, make sure all the stop signs are up, um, and then maybe get some striping done too before we open that up for Labor Day, Day weekend. But that's the current plan right now, that, um, it'll be into next week before we get that open to traffic for sure on, on County Road seven.
So, they're technically over the timeline right now?
Um, on the revised one that we, we told them back in July. Although I do anticipate another request, because after we agreed to additional, uh, basically fifteen days to give them, we did get some more rain. We'll just have to look at how that really did impact them, so.
So, they're not, at this point, aren't facing liquidated damages?
We, uh, we're there, right now as we speak, is a project meeting going on where, uh, Mark Lloyd was gonna inform them that we're gonna start charging liquidated damages, um, because we have not seen a, a new request as of yet. So, they may be trying to figure out how many days that they actually need and how many days they're gonna, um, be charged for LD.
And it was three grand a day?
Yes. My opinion is, it's better to give it back than to.
Yeah.
Take it away. So, I think we may charge it, and then if we continue to negotiate with them and get to an agreement, we can always pay out that amount that we withheld on a future pay application, so. So, their next payout may have some liquidated damages charged on it, and then if we negotiate and get to an agreement, we can always pay out. It's easier to pay back than to, to ask for money back from contractors. Uh, and then finally, the Casaw fifty-one and twenty-two bridge construction, so, we're well underway. This is County Road fifty-one there. On the left side of the picture, you see the abutment piling still, uh, up in the air after driving before they've cut it up. On the right side, you can see where, uh, the reinforcing steel has started to be placed in there. There, the steel piling is inside of that rebar cage that's been built. They've cut it off to the appropriate elevation. You build your rebar cage around it, then put the concrete forms, and then those piling become a permanent fixture in the abutment to support it. So, that's kinda how that, that works there. There's another picture, you're, we're looking to the east, Casaw six is, is over here uh, on that, that picture in fifty-one, so. Uh, gotta let that cure, um, for fourteen to twenty-eight days, depending on how the cylinders are breaking. And then we have pre-stressed, uh, concrete beams that come, and we be placed on, on top of that and set there. This is the County Road twenty-two bridge. You can see they got some of the piling driven. They don't have the other side driven yet. Note that we've got, uh, the erosion control in there, um, to capture any sediment that comes off of our project, um, in there. What's interesting is, inside of our project, you don't see any sediment, but in where the natural stream is flowing, it's collecting stuff that's coming from upstream, so, um, I just think that's always, we're always funny, that we, we do a lot of, we spend a lot of money on construction projects to control erosion and sediment from leaving our projects, only to see stuff floating by, not from us. Um, on these streams. But here, if you've never seen this before, I thought this would be interesting. Here's a video of pile driving, uh, occurring, if I can get this to. So, this is a diesel, uh, single-action hammer is what they call. Um, it's got actually diesel fuel in there, and this anvil as it drops down is actually compressing the diesel fuel in there. And it's, you know, a diesel works, it's not a spark, it's the compression of the diesel that causes the insp- explosion inside of that machine. And that explosion is actually what's driving that hammer down, not that anvil that's slamming down. That anvil's just compressing the diesel to cause the explosion, and then each explosion drives that, that piling down to the ground. You see these pink marks, the inspector draws those on there, because that's how we know we've reached the capacity, the bearing capacity, is how far does that move each stroke? As you're first driving, it goes down farther with each stroke. As you get close to the bearing, um, it moves less and less. Um, and then, based on, uh, the designer's calculations and the structure capacity that we need, we know, uh, how much that should move, uh, per blow. That determines when we've reached our bearing. We also know on this bridge, though, that those pile are actually bearing on, uh, bedrock, so that was, that was the other thing. Each abutment has a test pile, and the test pile requirement is you drive that to a hundred and fifteen percent of your planned bearing. Just as a kind of a safety factor, make sure that you're not sitting on weathered bedrock that may have loose material, and make sure you don't punch through. That's, that's happened before, where you think there's bedrock there, but if you drive hard enough, you punch through something and find an underground cave. And then, then, then you end up overrunning your pile length by quite a bit until you hit bearing again.
How deep are these piles?
So, uh, we're shooting to get about thirty feet.
Oh, wow.
So, um.
That would be further.
So, yeah, thirty feet we should be hitting piling. We're actually, they were actually hitting bedrock before that. We consulted with the designer on that and said, if we really could, we'd like to hit thirty feet. Less than that, once again, bridge, Minnesota is really particular about their bridges. Less than thirty feet of piling, uh, then you have to worry about scour. And, you know, with recent floods and stuff, you wouldn't think that thirty feet of scour could happen. But in other parts of the state, they've seen where flooding has eroded, you know, similar depths of material. So, when you have less than thirty feet of pile, that's always a concern, that if we had a catastrophic flooding event, could it wash away all that soil around that, and then you have pile that are unstable and could compromise the, the bridge, so. There you go, there were just some pictures of some road construction projects for your viewing pleasure, so. That's all I had for today, unless there's any questions?
I've got one.
We've got one.
Okay, uh, first of all, I'll, I'll start with mine. Make sure you get back with Jason Fleming, the police chief, to make sure that he's okay with putting those stuff in the roadway for the right-in, right-out at the school, Water Tower Road.
Did he talk to you?
I, I had conversations with Jason, you know, but.
He had stopped by my house the other day. He never mentioned it, so I wonder if, I, I completely forgot to talk to him about that, too.
So, we, we exchanged phone calls yesterday. I sent him an email first thing this morning with a picture attached, uh, of what we plan on doing. And it's a picture of those being flexible, and I'm revealing the secret to the whole public here, but they will bend out of the way. Um, a- and, and I guess that's my, my, just my opinion, right? If they need to get across those, just drive across them.
Drive.
I think we found, Chris, that not a lot of people watch these.
Okay. Yeah, so maybe, maybe our secret's safe with us, but, um, uh. We also decided, we talked about last time, that the ones that just use adhesive to do it, we're gonna get some that actually bolt down.
Yeah.
So, um, they still flux out of the way, but the base will stay in the same location, so. If they get damaged, we'll just, just replace them, so. Um, hopefully, hopefully that's, that appeases them and stuff, too. I mean, the reality of it is, next summer, we're gonna close that intersection to the north, so nobody's gonna be able to c- get through there from the north. Everybody's gonna have to come from the south, so.
Do they get them power lines moved up?
They're out there working on it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, they started last week.
They did, yep, so.
Let's be.
Then the other question that we had is that, we understand that the highway re-logged their trucks and all that? And we were wondering why that came about, or, or, uh, when the county's, you know, redesigning our logo.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, we've had some internal discussions about that, so. Um, we will be switching over to the, the county logo, uh, here soon. The intent was, as new V- new units came in, we would put the new logo on there. A different logo did show up on a couple of the new, uh, new trucks, but, um, I think it's in the county's best interest to have the new logo on, on the new vehicles at least, so.
Yeah.
For the side of the vehicles, I'll admit, it was kind of a unilateral decision. I made the decision of one of our logos, the round logo. And the reason why I chose that was because it could be a direct replacement of the round logo that's on there. Interestingly enough, uh, all of our other vehicles have that old, old logo on there with the, the cows in the roadway, um, on that. That's, that's the logo that's still on all of our re- remainder of our trucks, so.
We had, we had the. Okay, you got a question?
No.
Okay.
As, as points.
Okay. Yeah, that's the one that's, the, the only reason to come up is that we were discussing yesterday in negotiations about, you know, the rebranding of the county. And naturally, they wanna know if they can have funding to do the rebranding on some of their clothing, and it's like, this is not gonna be demanded of you right now. We may go ten years before it's all done. We're not paying to rebrand every shirt and everything you wear at this point, so.
But I also think it's important that if we have a logo, we stay with the logo.
Right.
And not go on our own to create a different logo and different apartments and all that. You know, we've gotta be, stay, stay together.
So, if the board's supportive of that, I mean, I will, this afternoon, have new logos. Well, they won't be placed on there. We gotta have them made. They haven't been made yet. But, um, I will have the new, new branding logo placed on the, the newer units.
I mean, I, I have, I have no issues if they're round and you have the branding in the middle, but that's fine, but we gotta use our branding logo.
Mm-hmm.
Cause all other departments are using the same logo, too.
Right. Correct.
Yeah, good.
And then, uh, Mr. Chair, did you get my email yesterday, Chris, on?
Oh, yes, about Mr. Petrovsky, yes.
We gotta address that. We've got to, on, you know, just a legal opinion, what we found on the, on the, the tour and everything like that, and what, what, what the county stance is.
What would the board like, uh, me to do? Is that consulting the attorney's office on that?
Um, I would say that, that I think what they're looking for is, they're, they say that there's no easement. You know, it's been there for twenty years. We just gotta say, here's the legal standpoint of where the county is, and here's what our view is. So, it gives them an idea of what they can do or wanna do or anything like that. They just haven't got that from the county as, as of yet.
So, would a letter from the attorney's office, is that what you think would be the ultimate product?
Yeah, I think, I think a letter from, from basically the highway department, uh, the attorney, whatever, whatever. Uh, we just need to give them, uh, cause right now, we, we haven't gotten back to them to say, the boxes aren't there or the boxes are in the right-of-way, the boxes are not in the right-of-way.
Cause here, from a highway standpoint, here's a couple of things. If it is in the right-of-way, um, based on Public Utilities Commission, uh, there's a whole bunch of statutes, two sixteen D, um, that deals with, they have a right to be within public right-of-way. If they become in conflict with the public use of that roadway, um, then we can do some things. So, if we can't demonstrate that they're in co- you know, creating a conflict from the public use, we may not have some, we may not have authority to have them to relocate.
No, we're, we're, but, but here's the deal. What they're saying is, is there was never an easement from the county, given to the county for that roadway. And there's law that states that if it's been maintained or whatever for X amount of time, it automatically is assumed easement.
Yeah.
They don't have that information yet.
Oh, so, just, you just think that the landowner is just simply looking for just, like statutory authority of that right now? Okay, not looking to a solution to whatever they're, they're concerned in.
And therefore, that would, that would transfer that, the, the right-of-way that would give, that would, that would ultimately give the, the, um, variety, or whoever the heck, eh, East Central Energy, whoever's in there, the, in the right-of-way, the ability to go ahead and put their stuff in there. But you said the last, uh, permits that were pulled were two thousand and six.
Y- yeah, we're pushing twenty years ago that.
But there's definitely stuff in that right-of-way that's newer than that. One actually just disappeared, he said. Magically disappeared.
And it'll give them some direction what they wanna do.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I will consult with the attorney's office on drafting up a, a letter, uh, to them, so, um. Good, thank you. I needed some direction. I, I hadn't seen any kind of formal requests from landowner on this, so.
And, and maybe, maybe not. Every time you get an attorney involved, it seems like the other side's almost gotta get one, too.
Yeah.
I mean, if some of this stuff can come from the county engineer and just say, hey, listen, here's what we have found. We have sent it over to the county attorney for their review of this, just, just so that we get something back to them in a timely manner. Because I know, uh, Troy has called me a couple of times, and, and I'm gonna have to go out and meet with him, and I, you know. There's, uh, there's only so much I can do. I don't know the legalities.
You know, yeah, worst-case scenario, if it's not county right-of-way, then it still falls to, it's a, it's between the private landowner and that utility to make something happen, so, um, worst case, it determines it's not a county road, then the next day, we'll stop maintaining it. And, um, no skin off our nose. Then it's gonna be between the private landowners to get the utilities moved to where it's more acceptable to them anyways, so. Um, I will work on that, we'll, I will.
And I think that just needs to be explained to them.
Yeah.
So that, you know, they understand where they're sitting and what they're doing, so.
And I don't think anybody who doesn't want it to be a county road at this point, it's more the fact that i- it doesn't appear that there was ever an easement, and the road got put in. Now, it's been maintained. They don't know that legality of it being maintained for X amount of years. It's automatically assumed.
Yeah.
There's just a lot of gray. There's just a lot of gray area there and, and you got somebody that is not an engineer or know anything about roads explaining it to them.
To be timely, may I ask the board if our attorney's office can't, uh, provide me some legal reference in a timely manner? Would I have permission to go to an outside attorney that's, that's, you know, very familiar with legal right of way? And, and when I'm, ah, okay, I, we have an attorney that sometimes we use when we negotiate and need to acquire right of way. We used one, it's Rinkin Noonan on the Casaw twenty-nine, um, since, um, urban environment and stuff, yeah. Adam Ripple is his name. He does this for City. If, if county attorney says, yeah, okay, we could do that, but we got courts and stuff for the next two weeks. Would it be okay with the board if I even had to pay something out of the highway department budget for an hour to draft up a memo with legal statutory authority of what is right of way and what isn't?
I think we got to do something reasonably quick because these people were.
They've been on it.
They've been on it for a long time and, and I feel horrible not giving them closure on at least what the determination is.
Okay, I'll make something, because I can make something happen, so.
Think it'd be nice to just get back.
Time and money.
Get back to them and say, hey, we'll have this taken care of within two weeks or three weeks.
Well, I've been saying that.
Yeah.
Oh, but that's got to come from the attorney or.
But we've had a road tour, tour for how long and.
It's still never happened.
Yeah.
Okay. And one more thing, commissioners, I apologize, but these things caused me to look at my notes again. I, I just thought it was worth mentioning. Just before coming into today's meeting, I took a call from our lobbyist, Grady Harn. What, just hot off the press, so to speak, uh, there is a state bonding tour that's going to be in St. Cloud next Monday on August twenty-fifth. Um, they said that they've had over a thousand requests for state bonding. And before you even asked, I said, tell whoever you need to tell that we will be there to talk about our project, so. More details to come today in the next couple of days, but I just wanted to get that out there now. Right now, they're looking at being at St. Cloud State. Grady is working his channels to see if we can get them to come to the site at the Socrates High School. But worst case, um, we should be prepared to maybe be at St. Cloud State on August twenty-fifth to talk about our project.
Yep.
And I'll share more details as I.
I know in the past they've had those at that Atwood Center.
Right, yeah.
Like the auditorium. Do you have an approximate time?
Sometime in the afternoon is what I heard. I don't have, uh.
And they've done them, I think they've done them at Watab Town Hall's already had one.
Okay, oh, they've already had one?
No, no.
Oh.
In previous years, they've had Watab Town Hall.
Okay.
Royalton Legion, I think, has had one in the past, too.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Chris, did signage get put up on eleven and twenty-two?
Yes, yes.
And what, what is our long-term plan of getting that fixed?
Well, we were doing some additional investigation with surveying. There was initial thought that, based on some quick surveys of one of the pipes, we thought that maybe the pipe itself was actually settling. Um, the long-term solution is, okay, we got a short term and a long term. Short term is, probably have maintenance go out there and grind it just to try to smooth out the bumps. Long term is, we need to get the, we want to get the contractor that installed those back into our office to discuss what happened here. See if they have any, uh, possible solutions to that. If they can't come up with solutions, as an engineer, I will step in and tell them what to do, but, um. They were the ones that, you know, the way specs work, we hire them to be the experts in doing this kind of work. So I believe in letting the experts tell us what they think went wrong first. If they don't know, can't come up with a solution, we will certainly tell them a solution to, to fix it, so.
It's different. I mean, it would be different if it was one, one culvert.
Yeah.
But it's multiple.
Yeah, a- and it's, it's over time, because we, we, we knew about one before the project even closed out. And we had to argue with them on whose fault it was. Um, they ultimately did fix it under the contract, no additional charge. But even that one, yeah, that has a patch over it, it's settling, and then the other ones have since come up, as we've, we've discussed before, so.
Was a contractor?
And I'm by all means not a hundred percent expert on that, but to me, it tells me when there's a hump in the road, that's the culvert. So the culvert's not sinking, it's sinking around the culvert.
Mm-hmm.
Um, otherwise, you wouldn't have that hump where that culvert's sitting.
Yeah.
And again, I want to re-bring up the fact to the board and to you that we really need to look at holding on to that bonding and not releasing that bonding until we get to the point. I, I know you said it costs attorney fees. I know all of that stuff. But we need to figure out how to recoup the taxpayer dollars when these things go wrong. If we're holding the bonding and we have to get an attorney involved to get that stuff back, we're recouping taxpayer dollars by holding that contractor accountable for what they did. So, eh, eh, that is something we need to discuss.
Who's the contractor?
Uh, Minnesota Paving Materials was the prime contractor, so, uh, they had a, uh, excavating contractor as the sub. Um, TS Dirt Works was the subcontractor that installed the pipes on that project.
Is that Travis Scott? Okay, all right. Chris, do you want to stick around? We'll do ditch authority right away. We'll turn it over.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll recess the board and go to ditch authority.
All right, call our ditch authority meeting to order. We've had roll call. Is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, is carried. Move on to item two, approve or amend the ditch authority minutes of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve those ditch authority many, meeting minutes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, is carried. Regular agenda item, discussion on maintenance assessments. I believe that came out in an email.
Yeah, so I've worked a lot on this. This is, um, trying to present the information in a coherent, easy to understand manner. I- it's, it's complicated on those ditches that we've had repairs. And so we have repair accounts and maintenance accounts to some that, you know, we've done a lot of engineering work, but we haven't initiated the repair yet. Um, i- it gets confusing easily, so. I do believe it's important to have some sort of documentation there. Um, i- if we get to an agreement of what that should look like today, this morning, my intention is to make any modifications I need to do and have a couple hundred printed off at a table as, as audience comes into the door this, this evening, and they can have that. And then we would have this on the screen as well. But, um, I, I don't know, I, I just plan on going through each ditch, um, specifically here, so. Starting with, uh, ditch three, once again, um, I try to anticipate what the end of the year balance would be on this one. It's, it's a, some of it was shot of a dark, uh, maybe, because we've received most of the assessments on that. We may have a positive balance, but not much at the end of the year. Um, then looking at twenty twenty-six, anticipating maybe about fifty-one hundred dollars of expenses, and that would be, uh, inspection costs and possibly mowing the buffer strips again, i- if that's something that's chosen. So that would put us negative five thousand dollars in at the end of twenty twenty-six, so therefore, uh, recommending a twenty twenty-six maintenance assessment of fifty-two fifty. And so, which is forty-seven hundred dollars less than last year. So if there's a silver lining to this, it would be a lower maintenance assessment than, than previous.
But it would leave us with nothing in there after the year.
Uh, possibly, so.
So forty-seven fifty less than the previous year. So the previous year assessment that we set was to cover what?
Was mowing a buffer strips, but we had no idea what that would cost until we actually got quotes, uh.
It was done?
Yes, yes, so, um.
Okay.
But if we want to do it again, so that's where it was like about half the cost. I think we did ten thousand last year.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we assessed, yeah, ten thousand dollars last year, and so.
But once we get an inspection done, we may determine that, no, we don't need to do that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we, we hear nothing, um, about ditch three now, so.
Okay.
Well, I think it's so small and.
Mm-hmm.
But if we don't do it, we'll have a positive balance.
Right?
Correct.
You're right.
Yeah, so if we determine that next year we don't need to do any mowing, then, um, yeah, then that would result in a positive balance. And then we'll have the same meeting this time next year and discuss whether we do more.
When do we foresee when the inspection would be done?
Well, okay, so we have, we have, we, we have a video inspection of it now.
Okay.
So, and, uh, our ditch inspector has placed all those in, uh, drone videos on the county ditch website. So anybody can go out there and look at those now.
Are you foreseeing then we have a committee to hold to decide on these individual ditches, whether or not we're going to proceed with maintenance?
Uh, but possibly, yeah, mm-hmm, so. Because that's, that's kind of the missing piece. We, we don't have any con- confirmation or hard yes or no's of what maintenance to complete. So, but, so that's numbers kind of based on what the quote was the last time to mow it, maybe with a little bit of inflation.
Sure.
For twenty twenty-six, so.
I'm okay with CD three.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's important on any of these ditches that we mow them once a year, because we got to show people that we're keeping up on these.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I've been changing my mind a little bit on the maintenance part. I don't think you need maintenance every year on these. Um, I think the grasses and some of that that stays on the ditch is better prevention than actually keeping it mowed down like we do. Um, the debris and that has a le, a higher chance to flow into the ditch and cause disruption. I, we got to keep the brush down. And we need to keep, you know, like, get on ditch, whatever we visit out here, or was, you know, up, up this high.
Well, then we got to, we got to have a very clear and concise, um, point tonight.
Yeah.
Because the average person, they go look at a ditch that isn't mowed, isn't up kept. They're going to think, we're not doing our job and we're just charging them.
Right, but they also don't want to have the, they think that a yearly ditch inspection and a year, you know, every year ditch maintenance is probably too much. I mean, you can't let them go like.
I haven't found one thing out there that people don't think is too much right now, seriously, and I'm not trying to be like that.
The mount that's going to the, to the maintenance part.
But I think if we have a cow after this is set, we can make the determination based off the inspection.
Yeah.
Because then we can say, according to the inspection, we need it or we don't need it.
Yeah.
You're right, eh, eh, it's, we're, we're basically, we're setting a budget.
Right.
Right now for that ditch. Sometime we'll have to come down and sit down and say, it's time to spend some of that budget. Do we want to?
And to both your points, like on CD three, for example, you're mowing grasses, right? In some of our areas, if they're mowing, they're going to get trash from soybeans and, uh, other row crops, corn stalks that could potentially watch into the ditch. So then the inspection, I think, helps us determine, do we need to move ahead or not? I, I still feel these first few years, we probably are going to each year until we get those buffers established. That's just my opinion.
You let those buffers go and it's going to look like we didn't do anything.
Yeah. And we're going to have to balance that. Good point, it's a budget.
Yeah, and we may get to a point that like, we only have this much budget, we're going to do what we can with that, and then next year, adjust and try to do more, or.
I think, and I hope I'm right in the long term, is that landowners are going to do a lot of this themselves.
Me, too.
And that's going to take care of a lot of this problem.
As long as the landowners don't do it when it's muddy and gets their vehicle, or get their tractor stuck.
And you're right.
And tear it all up.
And tear it all up, then we're back to square one, and then who do you charge? Because we let them do it.
Yeah.
Now, now you're, it's going to be a charge to the ditch and everybody's paying for it, and there's going to be a lot of upset individuals. I, and I think I mentioned before, I, I said, I think the, the first three years, we should be in charge of the mowing, to let that buffer, let everything pack down, make sure it's established, and then turn it over if they want.
They don't need to get permitted to do that, do they?
Mm-hmm. I don't think so, no, no.
So it just, you know, that, that brings up a good example, though, Scott, Commissioner Johnson. You know, maybe in the future, if they want to take care of it, they let us know what they're going to do so that we can go and inspect it afterwards. I, I'm being serious here.
But I mean, if you're going to tell somebody that, you know, it's July first and, and they're supposed to be out there making hay, and you're going to tell them they got to call the county, good luck. They're not going to worry about calling the county.
Well, they should let us know that they did something so that we can go and do an inspection report, right? We can fly the drone and say, okay, what happened here?
Well, maybe it's back to kind of your point of the first three years ditch authorities manage it until, until it gets established.
And I totally agree with that. The first three years.
Because by that time, the ground should be compacted a little bit, everything be maintained and, and the structure.
If I go out there and tear it all up to rat meat, the system's going to pay.
And then you're going to have a lot of upset individuals, and then, and then one person likes native grass and everything like that. The next person wants to make hay, and the other one, people, I like this brush.
And the other guy wants it like a manicured lawn.
Yeah.
And they're all fighting against each other.
And it all changes.
Yeah, then we start over.
Anyways, okay, we have consensus on three?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Chris.
All right, uh, county ditch five, um, quickly, we have no, uh, repair petitions on this. Um, uh, so anticipating maybe an end of year balance of eighteen thousand nine hundred, looking at maybe twenty twenty-six expenses of about nine thousand, and this would be to mow both sides of that buffer strip as well. Um, that would project a negative twenty-seven thousand at the end of twenty twenty-six, and therefore recommending a twenty twenty-six assessment of twenty-seven thousand.
So a CD five in the shape that we would only have to do buffers? Because when's the last time that ditch was touched?
Uh, not, not that I, I don't know.
You.
I think the landowners have been doing a lot themselves.
Yeah, but there's no sense to mow the buffers if nothing has been done to the ditch unless it's absolutely, looks like it's not going to have to be done.
Part of the negative fund balance, though, I will acknowledge, was that we had thirty-three thousand and some change of buffer strip payments that we made last year. And then last year, we only assessed, uh, twenty thousand dollars.
Plus the original redetermination benefits, guys?
Correct, yeah, mm-hmm. So some of that, I mean, maybe we don't need to mow, or maybe we only need to mow a couple sections or something. Um, but the nine thousand is kind of based on assuming both sides, the whole length of the, the ditch, so. But to Commissioner Capencey's point on the earlier ditch, twenty-seven would just put us maybe at a zero balance at the end of twenty twenty-six.
But CD five's never had both buffer strips mowed, has it?
Not as part of a formal action of the drainage authority. But, I mean, once again, the adjacent landowners have been active, I think, just on their own, keeping the channel clear and, and mowing things, so.
Are they going to ask for reimbursement?
Yeah.
I mean, serious?
You are, you're right.
They'll probably ask, but I, we have no, we have no vehicle to do that. We have no way of.
No.
Reimbursing them?
No.
It's not, statute doesn't allow that.
I wish somebody would take control and, and say, I'll, I'll do it for a couple grand and mow it. When, when it's costing the county, you know, eight, ten thousand dollars to do.
So if you had like on ditch five, so if we had somebody that came in and said, I'll take care of the buffers on this ditch for X number of dollars, can we grant that, or does the adjacent property owner A and B have to agree to that, too?
No.
No, the ditch authority has the authority to do that.
If somebody came to us and, and said they could mow a ditch that's typically costing us X amount, and they're going to do it according to the way that we want it, we'd be stupid not to at least give them a try.
Until you let them take the hay.
Until he beats.
Let them take the hay and it was my neighbor's hay, and then you're going to really have trouble.
Yeah, but the.
But he got paid for the buffer strip, so technically it's not his hay.
That is not his hay. Yeah, very good point there, Jim.
Then, that, I'll, I'll admit, that might be a gray area. They get paid for buffer strips because we're saying you can't do anything you want, like you can't plant row crops in it.
Right.
But the, the drainage buffer law does say that, that hay, taking of hay is permitted.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we can technically say that they got paid for us to.
Why wouldn't we put hay everywhere, then?
We do, I mean, basically.
Seated back.
Seated back, but not everybody wants to take care of it.
Well, my other concern, though, on CD five is, I mean, to my knowledge, we haven't been out there and done anything.
No.
So now we're looking at maybe mowing both sides of the buffer strip, but is it just that, mowing?
Is it possible to mow?
Yeah.
Is it possible to mow both sides?
Um, it may be. I mean, we do have a drone video. It looks like it's possible. Uh, we haven't.
Neither Adam or I.
So we don't have solid trees on both sides of this ditch?
Not like we did on six and nine and fourteen.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
All right. So your, your anticipated expenses based off of your joined, your, your drone footage and the inspection of it? Says we could mow with the buffer strips.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Now, as soon as I say that, we'll get quotes next year and I'll be completely wrong, but.
Well.
But I'm, I'm basing on what quotes we've had, we received in the past.
Well, we don't have a lot of his, we don't have a lot of historical data, right?
That's, that's what I'm struggling with, yeah.
So what did, oh, we don't have no engineers report on the ditch to see if it's even functional?
That's correct. Um, if you recall, like six, nine, and fourteen, we went through the re-establishment of drainage records process to, so we could prove the elevation at that bottom of that. the elevation that that bottom of that ditch is supposed to be. We have not done that on five. I'm not recommending that we do do that. Um, but um basically just getting back to case law that says that we shall be maintaining them. So and how do we maintain them if we have no fund balance to do that, so?
How long, what's, how long is this ditch, open channel ditch, roughly? Not very long, is it?
Three point six miles with the the main branch eh, or main trunk line and a couple branches, three point six miles.
But if there's no acceptable flow on ditch five and you go out and start spending money on mowing the buffers, man, you're gonna look like an idiot. You know, if the water doesn't flow, if there's got blockage or anything like that, I mean, why would, people would be just totally upset. We're spending money on mowing what?
Where does five outlet to, do we know?
Uh, Stony Brook Creek, right here at highway twenty three by the, by Norman Avenue there.
We probably maybe need to see the condition of the ditch.
I mean, yeah, other than visual with the drone, we don't have any survey on it or anything like that, so.
It's still a nega, still be a negative balance.
I, I mean, once again, board discretion, if you wanna just keep saying s- the same, last year we did assess twenty thousand. Um, and I think that's the, you know, once again, the negative balance is because that didn't fully cover all of the buffer strip payments and and, you know, the.
They gotta realize that they got payments for it.
Well, maybe on C D five, then that we do that for another year since we haven't fixed it. I don't know, I have mixed feelings about that, but. But you're right, I mean, you go out there and do buffer strips and the ditch doesn't flow.
Oh, boy. But once again, we are just the drainage authority.
Right.
We are tasked with what the people want.
If somebody came out and I, and I had a ditch and it wasn't touched and they were mowing it for an assessment, I'd throw them out. I'd throw them off the place.
Well, you're really kind because we can can control that.
Yeah, we control the buffer strip. We have every right to be there.
Not necessarily.
If they've gotten paid the buffer strip payment.
They have the right to do the hay on it.
Yeah, but they can't throw us off because it's eh, they, we paid the buffer strip.
I mean, we have to maintain them, there's no doubt about that, but we gotta make sure that we have something to maintain.
Okay, first you're saying we have to maintain it and now you're saying we have to have something to maintain.
No, no, we have to make sure that we have, you know, that it's a drainage ditch to maintain. We can't just go out and maintain. Here here's what I'm gonna say, no matter what on ditch five, we're doing at least nineteen thousand, cause we're in the, we're, so, so this is a budget. I say we do the twenty seven and move on to six because eh eh eh, all of these are just getting us back to square one.
That's right.
It's not, it's not.
Spent the money already.
Yeah.
We can decide if we're gonna move forward with the, the mowing or not at a future cow. We have consensus on five then to move ahead with a uh twenty seven thousand dollar assessment.
Yep.
Okay, C D six.
All right, now this one, if you notice, I I I phrase it a little bit different because we have that repair project that we're paying off. But we have this maintenance assessment that we did start last year as well. So I should, I I list the current maintenance fund balance. Um, and that's a negative balance of sixty seven hundred dollars. Um, once again, looking at twenty twenty six, I used what we paid the contractor last time to mow both sides. I inflated that a little bit for inflation and then the inspection cost. And once again, the inspection cost could be our ditch inspector going out there and inspecting the actual mowing, not just mo, you know, inspecting for the condition. Um, so seventy five hundred dollars, that would put us uh in the hole maybe of fourteen thousand dollars. But ultimately, I'm recommending just keep the maintenance assessment as the same as the previous year at seventy five hundred dollars. With our, with our accounting system, I think um, I say current maintenance fund balance is negative. This, I I would be willing to acknowledge though that we could still receive more maintenance assess, is that safe to say maintenance assessment, second half taxes? So we may have less negative at the end of twenty twenty six.
But you don't know what those are gonna be.
Yeah, so that's why I only felt comfortable displaying what the, as of August eighteenth, what the maintenance fund balance is for ditch six.
Do you think you need to show what the current repair balance is? Are we gonna differentiate? See, that was our quandary at our cow too, like, okay. I I don't know.
If you, if you want me to, we can display that, but it's it's a rather large negative number, so.
Okay.
Well, and that's what the county's holding the bag on.
Right.
I feel, I mean, maybe as a board and as your ditch engineer could say, we've already established the repair costs, we've come up with a repayment plan for this. We're just talking about now maintenance and we're gonna keep those counts separate.
Okay, yep. We okay consensus on C D six then at seventy five hundred. Okay, C D seven.
Um, okay, um, back to projecting the end of year twenty twenty six because we don't have a repair petition on that. Um, estimating will be in the hole about thirty six thousand. Um, twenty six, I I don't know if we'll do any mowing on that. Um, at the cow, we heard maybe rumors that there may be a petition coming anyways, so. I I'm not recommending doing any maintenance on that, but recommending the same assessment as we did the previous year, thirty five thousand dollars, just to kind of get us back to to zero.
And we're prepared to to tell them what the negative balance of thirty six thousand is about. It's buffer strip payments, it's reestablished in the record.
Yeah.
Just trying to get back to zero.
And a little bit in forward inspection cost, so we have a little bit of a but, well, yeah, we're basically getting back to zero, so. If we do much beyond just inspecting the ditch, we'll be.
To ask Chris a question, so uh not to money the water too much, but the assessment you just talked about though, isn't that more so a repair? Rather than a maintenance assessment? In other words, the redetermination benefits, the buffer s- strip damages, that's all preparatory for a possible repair, not necessarily maintenance per se. So that almost sounds like a really repair assessment, not a a maintenance assessment. So my point though is that when we, that assessment shouldn't go into the maintenance bucket. It should go into the repair bucket, cause ultimately there could be a repair, right?
Maybe, um.
So.
The, I mean, we have repair petitions on some of the ditches. Seven, we do not have a valid repair petition, so we don't know if a full scale repair.
I guess my point is, Chris, is on on projects where we have done repairs, all those initial costs have been bundled in with the repair assessment, not a maintenance assessment. So this is kind of mixing. So I I would suggest to be consistent, you know, any of that preparatory work that was done really ought to be considered a repair assessment and not a maintenance one. And that's how we've done it with past, where we proceeded with the repair, so.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
The downside is like, how do we recoup those repair costs?
If there's not a repair.
Repair would happen.
Well, I I understand like for Michelle is you can sort of, you can establish an initial, initial repair assessment and then change it later. So in other words, you you forge ahead and you do the repair, well, then you adjust the assessment then to reflect that. But I don't, I don't see a problem with with, from based on what hearing from her, you could go ahead and begin with a repair assessment and at least recover those initial costs, so.
But if that's the case, we'd need to do that on C D five then also because there's nothing been done there. You gotta be able to explain what's the original negative balance for. Is it a repair or is it a maintenance?
Well, I, my, my assumption is that, you know, we do all that redetermination benefits and buffer damages in anticipation of a repair. Not anticipation, not anticipating maintenance.
Doesn't, that splits them out.
Right, you're establishing the groundwork for a repair. Is, if if I, I would wager if we were, all we're gonna do is mow buffer strips, we probably wouldn't have gone through all that effort beforehand.
I think it's gonna be very important that we let everybody know tonight that we're the only county that's breaking it out like this. Because it becomes fuzzy on what it is.
Well, but but I I think again, most likely as time goes by, Chris is gonna wanna know, what do I have in my maintenance account? And if it's all in one bucket, I couldn't tell him. We wouldn't know. It's all bundled together with repair and maintenance. And we would have no idea. So I, I would be willing to wager that those counties that, you know, that was a kale said, well, they don't do it separately. My wager is they're still tracking it separately in spreadsheets. That's my bet. Cause I think they naturally wanna know the difference between repair assessment and a maintenance assessment and how much was in each bucket. There's probably doing stuff in in spreadsheets, most likely.
Got something. They're not breaking it down.
But internally, they're breaking it down.
Well, I would bet to, you know, Christine, if you've got some of those counties in the south that have very mature ditch systems that are being well maintained, all they have are maintenance assessments. That's all they're doing. You know, they, they just got a mature system and they're maintaining them. At some point, we'll get there too. Where all we should have really are maintenance assessments. So you could just call it one thing. But right now, we're kind of in parallel. You've got this repair going on, now you got maintenance stacked on top. At some point, there shouldn't be any repair assessments. It's all just maintenance.
Well, I don't necessarily have an issue with that, but we're gonna have to be consistent. We're gonna have to go back to five then and call that repair. Because it's not maintenance.
That's why.
P five.
Because again, my argument is with previous projects that had proceeded to repair, all those costs had been bundled into repair assessment, right?
Just to be a counterpoint, I think it's worth being devil's advocate here. Say we do that, we separate now, we're just gonna say, hey, today we're looking at maintenance on ditch five because we don't have a repair. We say, okay, repair, um, uh, maybe that ends up being a positive balance. Then, or let me, even I'm getting this confused. Maintenance account. Maintenance account, that negative number becomes a lot closer to zero. We say, okay, we can end up with a positive maintenance account at twenty, after the end of twenty twenty six. But then somebody comes forward with a petition and then we drag up all these old repair costs from twenty twenty. My concern is the average taxpayer is not going to understand why, why did you tell me August of twenty twenty five that we could potentially have a positive repair pa, uh, positive ditch account? Now you're dragging up old costs eh, sometime in the future. I agree, this is, this is very confusing, but um, I work for you guys, so you you tell me how you want the the numbers to be displayed.
Isn't a good way of doing it. There's not, it's.
And maybe we need to present it as this is maintenance and repair and buffer strip payments and leave it at that. Trying to break this down is where it's making it confusing.
You're right on the, you're right on the.
Break it down into maintenance or repairs. Some of these have not had repairs, but we had to purchase buffer strips. Some of them have had repairs and now we're just trying to maintain. So eh eh, I mean, maybe this is presented as of each ditch and it, this is repair, maintenance and buffer strip purchases on these ditches. And s- leave it at that.
And we keep our internal, we can, we can, we can still keep our internal spreadsheet like Christine was saying that says this was for maintenance. We know it could be for maintenance, we, we know.
Cause I really think we get a repair petition, even if people understand that that repair work costs money. I believe that they would understand, oh, the day you repair the petition, that's when your cost started for that repair. I don't know, I just get concerned.
Confusing.
I I still get concerned that, say, we get a petition on January first twenty twenty six of C D five. That's easy to say, okay, that's when our repair costs start. Anything before that.
Was maintenance.
Maybe, because, I don't know.
Like I said, i- if you listed as repair, maintenance and buffer strip payment, then you are covering all avenues and then you can go into explaining that some of these have not had a a a a re, a valid petition, but yet we purchased buffers and um we still need to maintain the buffer strips.
But we've also paid for a reestablishment there.
Every ditch has went through reestablishment of.
A redetermination of benefits.
And buffer payments.
Correct.
Yes, they've all. We can start with that. So some of these ditches haven't had any repairs. So every ditch has had these two things. After that, all these ditches are separate.
Well, this is, I mean, it's interesting because we're, I feel like we're reinventing the wheel. We're not the only ones that have dealt with this. So there's gotta be a clearer way. But we just better be consistent.
I think the only clearer way is when all the ditches are completely repaired and we're just going back down to mowing. And maintenance, that's when it's gonna be clear.
Me and you, but I won't be around. Go ahead, Monty.
So I guess, you know, again, I I think when you've got uh ditches that have been repaired and then we're layering on the top, the maintenance assessment, I think just for, for Chris's purposes and Kelly's purposes, it's good to have those separate. I think if you're starting one from scratch, that that there's been no repair on it yet, maybe this is the clean break to just go with one assessment. And it covers all costs incurred to date and going forward. Uh, but I think again, with the ones we have now, they really should continue to be separate. Uh, so Chris knows how much he has for maintenance and we're not mingling in the repair assessments that are coming in with maintenance assessments. So we can tell you, okay, Chris, here's what you got. But maybe going forward with like, is it five you're talking about?
Potentially, I mean, that's hypothetical.
Right, yeah. That could just be one consolidated assessment for all, all costs incurred up to this point. And also anticipated maintenance. Cause you're right, you may not know whenever you get a petition, it could be ten years from now.
I mean, I think Commissioner Papa had a good point. There may be some landowners say, the ditch is flowing just fine for my purposes, why are you even out there spending anything on it?
Yeah.
But I think we could make the argument that, well, we did do a redetermination of benefits and we did pay landowner for buffer strips, so we've gotta recoup that.
And that's important that we make sure that we paid for buffer strips. That you are paying for the right to have this ditch on your property.
I guess my thought about you, I I, let's just say you're sitting on thirty thousand dollars of redetermination costs and so on and so forth. I wouldn't suggest just sitting on those until you do a repair, cause again, it could be a decade from now.
We need the cash back.
So I, I, yeah, I think you should start an assessment. And and maybe again, this is a time where you just have one. It's it's one there for which there has been no repair. So there's no like, two things going on at the same time, repair and maintenance, and it's just one assessment.
But then that's it'd be screwy to have a couple ditches one way and then the other ones this way and then.
I know, I'm just trying to think of, I'm just trying to think of a compromise.
Yeah.
But Jared, I think the ones where we did the repair on six and nine and twelve and that, they know that. That the repair was done. If you go to say ditch eleven, we've done nothing, right?
Correct.
We just tell them that on ditch eleven, we did the redetermination of of benefits and we paid out buffer strips and that's it.
That's what we need to recoup.
We need to recover that money.
I would like that to be really pointed out because when they come into my office to pay, that's what they're asking. What am I paying for? They haven't been out there and done it.
Yeah.
So just saying that what last year reflected and this year is recouping those costs.
And you're, you're probably get a lot of people that didn't get paid for the buffer strips because they're two miles away from the ditch and I, yeah, I can see why they wouldn't.
To explain that too, that even though, yeah, you are paying for your neighbors.
Benefited.
Because I've had to explain that.
But you're also getting drainage benefits.
To Christine's point, I'm hoping Kale's presentation hopefully makes that a little bit more clear that there's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes before you see any dirt being scooped out. I don't know.
So I I guess it maybe is a question for Kale is is we're describing tonight's action as maintenance assessments. So does that mean anything legally? In other words, what we bundle in with that? And that's why I'm wondering is can you actually toss the redetermination, et cetera, et cetera? You know, buffer strip costs into what we're calling a maintenance assessment, cause that's the whole purpose of tonight's meeting is to talk about maintenance assessments. So it might be worth a question, Akil, is that, are we good? Throwing all those into that bucket and calling the maintenance? I'm not trying to like, you know, get too much into nitty gritty, but I'm just curious myself if that actually has a legal meaning.
I believe on our cow, when he was joining us, he said, keep it simple.
And that would be simple.
And that would be simple.
It's just scary, we're sitting here talking about this and in about six hours, we're gonna be in front of a bunch of people.
Oh, really?
But at the beginning of your call, I mean, I know Michelle, I was just kinda trying to re- recommended having this annual public meeting to talk about maintenance assessments and I would imagine. And I would imagine that as a creature of the the ditch law, then it isn't just something we created. It was.
And I believe a lot of ditch authorities do that. It's at different times of the year, but uh, I think those that are very active with their ditches have this annual meeting.
So we start that after all the ditches have been repaired?
The problem is is they might not be repaired for ten years.
None of us might be here now.
Perfect.
That's exactly why I said that.
That's why I said, this, this is, this is everything, whether we wanna think that it's for maintenance repair. This, this meeting tonight to me i- is to explain why we have the costs we do for our ditches. And so it is, it is maintenance, it it is purchasing the buffer strips, it is, I mean, it's everything. And and we need to make this as simple as we possibly can in layman's terms, not fancy outright terms that those people understand. So they're not going to Chris and asking him a ton of questions that, you know, he's gotta go into to- total depth with, or Christine that has to go into total depth with. This needs to be simple for them to understand. I mean, I don't know how, how else to say that because I mean, some of these people coming to this meeting tonight probably have no clue what this is all about.
That's why I guess, Commissioner, I worry about using the term maintenance.
Well, that's what I mean.
Because if it's an all inclusive kind of assessment for any and every cost, maintenance is a little narrow. You know, someone may say, well, how does redetermination benefits got to do with maintenance? Or buffer strip damage payments, what's that got to do with maintenance? So maybe, maybe it's a few questions Chris could toss at Kale before the meeting.
All right, so.
What ditch were we on again?
We're on seven.
You want me to throw out all the numbers and come up with some different?
Why don't we just put one big number in red and say, this is gonna be assessed. Then I name the ditches and this is all it's gonna go down.
Well, the recommended assessment for twenty six is thirty five grand, which basically gets us back to zero.
Yeah, and I mean, that was what it was this year. Um, I mean, I thought maybe the public would understand that better because in twenty twenty five, it was thirty five thousand. It's the same twenty twenty six. I don't know.
And will still be under.
Possibly, yeah.
Without anything in twenty six. So whatever we do over and above this is just putting the delta even bigger in the red.
Well, what's the consensus on seven?
Go with the thirty five.
Got a lot of choices?
That's right.
Well, I mean, we do, we've, we've, we can high, we can raise it.
Yeah.
I mean.
So they were assessed thirty five thousand in twenty five and now we're gonna assess them another thirty five thousand. And that just covers our redetermination of benefits.
Just covers our cost.
And buffer strips covers our cost.
So, yeah, we gotta, we gotta get that back to zero.
But it's not going to be zero.
Close.
Close, if we don't do anything in that one.
Yeah.
Well, we won't do anything probably unless we get a redeterminer.
Yep.
Okay.
Repair. All right, C D nine.
Okay, so C D nine, once again, we just completed a repair, so this is back to being confusing. So we've already established a repair assessment. And so that's why I showed a current maintenance fund. We essentially have no, a zero dollar maintenance fund. Um, so.
So in nine though, why are you anticipating buffer strip payments?
Oh, that's an error. Good catch. Nope, it would just be instruct, inspection cost. That should be struck. The buffer strip payment should be struck. So some inspection costs to go out there if we get calls and stuff, um, and things like that.
And C D nine's repair was finished when, in twenty four?
We finished in twenty four and we had all those public hearings this spring of twenty five and we did the final certification in June? In June. So everybody got, was part of those meetings in June saying that we're already assessing you for the repair.
It was finished before that.
Yeah, well, some will say that we've never finished it. We haven't finished it yet.
I, what I'm getting at is how long are we gonna push the maintenance off? See, that's.
Yeah. I mean, to kind of throw a pack at the public, money doesn't grow on trees. If they want us to do more, wh- where's the funds gonna come from to pay for that? So the, and and as you recall, at the cow, we talked about, we should put something in there. So that's where the five thousand dollar recommendation came from.
We're just, but we're gonna put something in there, but we're not anticipating to spend it.
Yeah.
So then the question may come up, are you going to be maintaining? Do you know off the top of your head, Adam, if nine looks like it needs to be, anything done with it?
Yeah, nine and fourteen had some pretty good erosion due to the rainfall we had. Um, but also, you know, I think an inspection could be considered, you know, ru- routine maintenance. So, you know, having, you know, five thousand dollars in there. I guess it just depends if if someone thinks an inspection is maintenance or not.
And that's, I think, what Monty's gonna get at, and maybe that's a question for Kale. I can throw at him before the meeting tonight. Once again, maybe if we think of it as like a budget, well, we're setting a budget for maintenance of nine uh, on ditch nine for five thousand. If something comes up, we'll certainly talk about it at a public meeting. And if it ends up being ten thousand dollars worth of work, we need to make the decision, do we over, do we exceed the budget to get it done, or do we only do up to five thousand?
Well.
Cause that's all we assess.
In Kale's presentation, he did list out the costs that could be incurred. In fact, he included board members' costs, which I brought up and said, to my knowledge, we're not charging the systems, the ditch authorities right now.
You're right, and that, hopefully he makes that distinction tonight. That's, there's more things Benton County could be charging that they're not.
Well, in this case, we're charging back an inspection cost. I, I just wonder.
Inspection costs should definitely be a part of maintenance, because if you don't do an inspection, you don't know what maintenance you need.
I just think the question may come up from C D nine landowners that are you gonna start maintaining? They're probably aware of the sluffage that's happening too. And the buffer strips haven't been mowed in a year and a half. And we kinda committed that we're gonna maintain it. And maybe now isn't the time. I'm, that's open for discussion, but I would think for sure next year, we better be out there.
So something just occurred to me and maybe I need to confirm with Kale the procedure. What I just recalled is last year, we had this public hearing where this was presented and we discussed it. And then we came back the very next meeting to what Michelle called ratified it. So we can use these, maybe just use these numbers as a starting point. And then based on what we hear from the public tonight, if like on nine, they say, no, we want you to do more than five thousand dollars worth of maintenance next year. We increase that number and at the first meeting in September, we bring that back to be quote unquote ratified or finally adopted.
That's a, that's a good point. Throw it back at them.
And say, this is just a staff recommendation for next year. It's a budget recommendation, but the whole purpose of meeting tonight is to throw out our recommendations and hear what the public says.
Well, and to treat each system separately that way. Let those landowners commit on the C D nine system that that's what they wanna have done.
Correct. I think that's worth acknowledging that each in, each ditch is individual. We don't, yeah. We're not co-mingling the funds. We're keeping the funds separate for each ditch.
But I do think we have to be careful as a ditch authority going forward that they may not say they want it done. But the challenge is back on us. Are we just gonna turn our back then and not do anything because they didn't say they wanted it done?
The, the problem is, is you're gonna get ten percent that that want everything done. You're gonna get fifty percent that that don't say anything but are gonna be upset with you, whatever way you go. And the other people are gonna be voice your saying, I don't want, you know, I mean, you can't please anybody. You can't.
I don't have an issue with taking that input from the public, but I think we'd still, our responsibility to, at the end, to make the decision on if it has to be maintained or not.
And I think that needs to be made clear. We're, we're looking for your input so that we can make the right decision for the whole of the ditch.
But it's gotta be the whole of every ditch. We can't, we can't make a rule for ditch nine, then a rule for ditch six, then one for three. It needs to be across the county.
Well, that's why we did the buffer, double sided.
Yes. It, because I'll guarantee some of the people that haven't had anything done in their ditch are gonna have way different opinions than diff, than people that had something done on their.
Repair and their repairs.
Yeah.
But ultimately, we're there to listen to what they have to say overall.
Yeah, exactly.
And then at the end, it is our, our decision to make.
Yep.
But we're, I mean, this is our way of listening to the public and what their feedback is.
But that, that goes to the, the ditches that we paid buffer strips out, we did the redeterminative benefits and we haven't had a, a, a repair to.
We're still reimbursing ourselves.
Yeah.
We know, we, we've, we've expended a lot to get to this point even and the general fund has had to front that, so.
I've got a very good idea I'll bring up tonight. Let's give Jerry Machi the extra money he's looking for and he takes on ditches.
Exactly.
And he can what?
Takes on the ditches.
Soil and water, soil and water takes on ditches in different counties.
They know way more than we do.
Believe you me, that's been discussed and I don't think they have a whole lot of interest. They can't keep their office staff chairs filled as it is.
No.
He wants to be friendly, Jerry.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we wanna be friendly commissioners too, but it's not turning out that way.
So what do you wanna do with nine?
Keep it.
Yes.
Keep it.
Okay, ten.
Ten, okay, uh, uh, yeah, so we have a valid petition. Uh, so right now, the repair fund has this large negative hundred thousand dollars. So here I'm showing both. We've got a repair fund balance and a maintenance fund balance. So the maintenance fund is positive because we did assess a maintenance uh, assessment last year, but we've got this larger repair fund. So kinda, kinda what Monty was saying earlier, since we do have a repair petition in, we know we're gonna have to do some sort of repair. So in this ditch, I'm showing that distinction. So.
So this is without the repair though?
Yeah, and so I'm recommending a twenty twenty six maintenance assessment of thirty three thousand dollars. And that's because it's the same as it was in twenty twenty five. Theoretically, we're gonna be doing a repair on ten very, very soon and then we'll be having that discussion on repair assessments.
Then you're gonna take your positive balance that's in the maintenance and put it towards the repair?
I think we should be prepared to address that. The public's gonna say that, hey, if you have a positive maintenance, can that go towards the repair?
What do you think the repair is gonna run? What was it? Was it like five hundred grand on this one?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Well, either you assess them here or you assess them there. I mean, what difference?
Correct, yeah.
Cause even, even at thirty three grand, we're four years out of getting this taken care of, right?
Yes.
I mean, this isn't gonna go down for them. It's only gonna go up.
It, it, it will, yeah. The, the benefit is that they've at least had two years of assessment before they got hit with a bigger one. So maybe, maybe the recommendation is that we increase thirty three thousand a little bit. I just couldn't come up with a justification um, knowing that the repair is coming. So just recommend the same as twenty twenty five, but it wants to increase it because we know the repair assessment's gonna be higher.
How many years have we been going all fifteen?
Well, the last couple depends on the.
Yeah. Okay, so if I went five hundred grand and I added the one thirty six, so that's six thirty six, I divided by fifteen years, I come up with forty two four. I mean, I, I'm just saying that we're at thirty three grand, that's the lowest I would go.
I think the question is, is your repair fund balance at a minus one thirty six going to be in addition to the five hundred thousand dollars or the five hundred grand of total repair? Okay, so it is a six thirty six number.
Yeah, I think, I think Jared did that correctly, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
You won't hear that very often.
No. I can leave.
Are you saying we should raise it to forty two?
I, I think we should because I think, I mean, if we, if we don't do it now and we gotta assess next year and it jumps to fifty thousand, people are gonna be pissed.
Well.
If we can keep it at forty two thousand from here on out, people are gonna be like, okay, I'm been, I've been paying that.
But if we do the, the clear repair for five hundred and some thousand, then we're gonna give them the option to pay it off all at once or?
They can still do that at that point. How accurate is your five hundred thousand?
Um, I don't know.
I mean, is it five eighty, is it five, five hundred?
I remember something like six hundred thousand dollars, but I knew that that had contingency in there, including the engineering and stuff. So you, you added those two together, which makes me feel more comfortable. So we're six thirty to six fifty probably for total project cost maybe.
I think if we go forty two thousand, it's a lot better number. And it's gonna be more consistent from year to year.
So the one thirty six, did that come from the engineering costs and everything on that?
Yeah, that would be the engineering cost, redetermination of benefits, the buffer strip payments. All those things that we were talking about previously.
Yeah.
But we kept it in the repair fund because we did have a repair petition, so we know that that project's coming.
So we good with forty two?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good way to explain it, that it'll get paid for over fifteen years if we.
Yep.
Consensus with forty two?
Yeah.
Okay, forty two.
All right, I will make that adjustment. Um, so back to no repair petition, anticipating a negative fund balance of forty four thousand. Um, anticipating, you know, twenty five hundred dollars of inspection cost due to the length and stuff. I don't know if we'll be knowing that or not, but um, an end of year twenty twenty six balance is, looks like minus forty six thousand. So last year, we, we um, assessed thirty six thousand. Recommending keeping it the same as this year.
So just a thought, I mean, how many miles has ditch eleven? That's one of our longest ones, right?
Well, cause it has a branch or two on it, yeah, so. I thought I had that. Uh, I'm not seeing that. I actually think it's a little bit longer than the, than eleven or uh, ten, so.
What do you think, just take the whole thing?
I was just thinking, take the whole thing out of there and be done with it. Maybe once again, we're a bank and we shouldn't be.
Forty seven grand then.
Because if we do any maintenance at all out there, which there hasn't been a valid petition yet, right? So we're gonna keep going backwards. I'm just saying, if we take the whole forty seven, my guess is it's not gonna that extra five grand, six grand wipes that out. And it's not gonna, it's not gonna hurt as much.
We probably won't do any maintenance if there's been no valid repair because it's.
So forty seven thousand?
Yeah.
C D eleven?
Okay.
C D twelve?
Uh, so we have a repair petition, so much like ten, keeping it separate. Yeah, we have a positive maintenance fund balance because we did levy a uh, twenty five thousand dollar repair or shoot, I'm getting confused. Maintenance in twenty twenty five, so keeping it the same should theoretically put us in a positive balance at the end of twenty twenty six, but.
You've got a valid repair?
Yeah, we have a valid.
And what's that cost? Maybe we do the.
We don't, we haven't even started a repair report yet on that.
Okay.
So that'll be next year then to figure out the total cost. I'd say leave it the same.
This is the one that also outlets into nine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Leave it at twenty five.
Okay.
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 Thirteen.
Thirteen, so this is the one that we have the repair. There is a current positive repair fund balance, but I believe there is still an end of year transfer to occur to repay back a loan from the general fund for this. Cause I think we decided there's still one more year to repair, uh, to pay back the repair. But maintenance fund, um, a negative sixteen hundred dollars. Maintenance expense, so we've heard that it needs some work. Um, I'm thinking at least four, you know, actually it was less than that, probably about thirteen thousand dollars just to, to address both sides of the buffer strip. Mowing, removing trees and stuff. Uh, I hope that that's a good number. Maybe, maybe it isn't, but um, so yeah, recommending twenty twenty six of seventeen thousand dollars. A- a- and reason why that one was because when the repair was finalized and the repair assessment started at that time, a number just under seventeen thousand was published and as we discussed at the most recent cow, just rounding that up to seventeen thousand.
But was never assessed.
It was never assessed. So in that regard, we're just trying to be consistent with what we previously had published, that someday ditch thirteen would have a maintenance assessment of around seventeen thousand dollars per year.
But you're hoping that that thirteen grand would get you. What happens if we just do twenty and we? But you're hoping that that thirteen grand would get you. What happens if we just do twenty and we, that gives you a three thousand? No, no pun intended, a buffer. Cause the one thing I don't want is we tell them that this is gonna clean that up and we come back and we're three or five grand short. And then we have to go more.
Well, the other thing I don't want is we haven't been out there to touch thirteen since.
Oh my god, yeah. I just, I drove by it once last spring and it's not good.
Quite certain thirteen and fifteen only had one side done.
Correct, yeah.
So we don't know that the open channel is functioning.
I think, I mean, put my engineering hat back on, a good recommendation, good place to start would be to, let's address the buffer strip so we can see it. Get out there and inspect it and then address the channel. It may be a multi-year process, but.
Yeah, cause the fifteen grand isn't gonna touch.
How, how big is ditch thirteen? How many, is it a long, is it?
Yes.
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe.
Thirteen is four point six miles long.
Maybe we could go to twenty five thousand or something like that to help alleviate some of this stuff. It gives him a bigger budget to get a contractor out there to do some of this stuff.
So if we go, if we go twenty thousand this year and twenty thousand next year, we'd be twenty five ahead, right? Thirty ahead, twenty seven ahead for twenty seven.
But are we gonna do some work? See, that's the.
Well, we don't know if we have to do work on it in twenty six, that's our issue. This is so enjoyable.
And it's because we're starting, we're basically starting from scratch in a lot of this. We're basically saying that there is no more money to do work on ditches, so we've gotta start a budget.
Did you fly thirteen? What's the channel itself look like?
I'd have to look back at it.
I looked at it, from the air, it's hard to see cause it's pretty.
I have a feeling it's like we never did it.
That's what I'm afraid of.
And the spoils were probably put on a pile. So the buffer strips aren't even really manageable. I bet it's like what they did to seven.
I thought they, I didn't think they left the spoils. I thought the spoils were spread out on the one side.
It might be.
I'm pretty sure that they spread the spoils.
It may vary. I think there was more cooperative landowners on that that wanted the dirt and was moving it themselves.
Thirteen's gotta be realigned, doesn't it?
That's something that, once we go out to inspect it, that's gonna come up. That we have these additional channels that are connecting thirteen into fifteen that changes the drainage patterns.
Mr. Chair.
He's the chair.
Yes, yes.
May I say something?
Go, you go right ahead.
The deputies have been standing all day. You think we could let them sit down?
Or leave.
Yeah, or leave. Unless they, Deputy Thomas, what you wanna come up here? I know you got seniority there.
Yeah, we're good. I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you for bringing that up. I thought about it a couple times and got sidetracked.
I, 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 I think Jared makes a good point. Throw it at twenty five thousand.
Okay, CD thirteen at twenty five grand, we have the consensus. Okay, fourteen.
All right, back to having that repair fund and maintenance fund, large negative repair fund. Uh, because we just certified that and we have those, um, things to pay out. But what's interesting is, I, I thought we talked about this, but you know, we, we published a final cost when we had the initial hearing. And we still incurred additional costs after that, whether it was inspecting the ditch, meeting with landowners, um, what have you. So we were, we were charging that to the maintenance account because as a ditch engineer, I didn't feel comfortable changing that, charging that to the repair fund, cause we already had published what the total repair costs were. So that's why we're starting off with a negative repair or, ah, negative maintenance fund balance.
What is it, forty five?
Forty one five. On fifteen years.
That's the, that's the.
That's everything.
Yeah, okay.
That's a six nineteen.
That's already in place.
That's already been assessed out, right? So we don't have to do this.
Will be assessed out.
Will be assessed out. They've already agreed to that.
So we, we need to talk about the maintenance.
So, is fifteen gonna be enough for that?
I would think so. After just redoing it, it should be.
Just do fifteen then. You think that's good?
Yeah, cause my first recommendation was to do zero because I, you know, I've, I've listened to the public hearings and I know people are upset. But that means no more maintenance.
None of these should be zero.
When was that completed?
That was after.
Well, same time as nine, so last fall.
So in twenty twenty six, we should probably be out there. Mowing more than likely, right?
And that's what the fifteen grand is gonna.
Yeah.
That's what it's for. Inspections and mowing.
Gonna be trying to catch up, really, it's twelve, twelve grand, cause we're twenty nine hundred in the hole.
Is that twelve grand gonna be enough to take care of that? Ditch mowing and everything?
Ten grand, two will be the inspection.
I'm hoping so, because yeah, we've already cleared the trees. It should be, you know, maybe those pencil diameter willows that have popped up or something like that.
A little bit of sluffage that's probably happening.
In, in, in my opinion, and this is just one vote here, I, we should, in the next year or two, we should never see red. We should always be in the black because we are not the bank. And this is, this is the cost of.
You're assessing in anticipation.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be seeing red. We should be seeing.
Okay, so fifteen grand then on fourteen. CD fifteen.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Got a hand in the audience?
Would it be safe to assume that nine and fourteen should be the same?
Well, they're different. Fourteen's a bigger system, isn't it?
Uh, overall length, yeah, because fourteen has multiple branches on it.
Like six of them or something.
I guess I can just see the neighbors that are very close to each other, they're saying, why am I gonna be assessed fifteen and the other one only five?
Well, the other problem is some of that maintenance assessment's gonna reflect an outlet benefit to nine too, right?
Right.
And twelve is the same thing. Cause they're both outletting to nine.
Moving on to fifteen?
I'm just thinking about the public's.
Yeah, no, that's good. That's, you're right.
How far, well, what did we do with nine?
Five.
Thousand?
And I think nine was just, well, yeah, maybe as a starting point, we know that we need to, we may need to do some maintenance, so.
Maybe we'd put that at fifteen and be done.
For nine too then? Be done with it.
I don't. Are they similar enough ditches though? I am just throwing that out there. Nine has one branch.
Wow, okay, okay. Throw, throw, throw ten at nine. Throw ten grand at nine.
Can we hypothetically do this? Can we say, just for our own county math? Take all these assessments for maintenance, right? And maybe only four ditches need maintenance this year. We use that pot of money or whatever, we pool out of that pot of money. We know it's all gonna get assessed to certain areas, but you know what I mean? And we keep track of it on a spreadsheet saying that this one took this.
Oh, we took, like, we took two dollars from ditch twelve.
Over there because this one didn't need it. You know, but at the end of the day, it, that two dollars still gotta go back to.
Ditches.
Yeah, it, it's gotta, it, it, so as these assessments are coming in, the county looks at it as one big pool of money. And instead of trying to.
I don't think we can. I think, I think in statute, each ditch has.
Having its own fun. I, you, it always used to be that way. Yeah, but what I'm saying is, is right now, we can't say that that's working, cause we're pulling it out of reserves.
Well, it's because we have to.
Yeah.
We haven't, we don't have assessments yet, so cash has to come from somewhere.
And, and I'm not saying that we, we do away with a certain, um, fund for that ditch. I'm just saying that, that ditch twelve has twenty five thousand dollars assessed. Ditch seven, uh, ditch thirteen has seventeen thousand dollars assessed. Together, we're at forty two thousand dollars, right? Well, ditch thirteen may, may not need anything, so we can use some of that money. Knowing that the next year, we're gonna get more in and everything. And it, it's almost like a borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, but then Peter gets it later.
Don't tell the residents that you're doing that.
We'll use the county funds.
Because we're sitting here.
We'll use the county funds to supplement it and pay the county back then, in a sense.
Yeah.
But you don't know when you're gonna get it back.
Right. Well, yes, you will.
Yeah.
Well, it's assessed, but at what, what rate?
So these smallish maintenance assessments, Chris, do they have stated terms and rates of interest?
No, because they're, they're treated as a one-year, one-time assessment.
So, this goes back to, I thought I heard earlier, we were contemplating maybe assessing in advance for a future repair. Did I hear that? And, and I worry about that because I know when you do a true repair assessment, there's a stated rate of interest and a term. So if you're really assessing money, what ultimately used for a repair, there is no such stated term or rate of interest. So I'm a little worried about that of, of legaling and, and, and assessing in anticipation of repair. So I think we need to sort that out. I, something tells me that, mm, I don't know. You're really collecting money for repair without interest or stated term.
Well, I think what we're, okay, what we say, what we're doing is, we're collecting our one-time maintenance assessment. And then if sometime in the future, we.
Couple of three ditches ago where we upped it.
To forty two versus.
See a repair coming and effectively sounded like some of that money would be used for the repair cost.
Only like.
I, I say, well, maybe.
I don't think it really, the dollar amount, it really matters. It's gonna be used for recover repair costs.
Maybe we can't make that statement now, but at the time that a repair does happen, if we happen to have a positive balance in that account that goes towards that first.
Utilize that.
So I think Monty's got some good points. We can't be stating that we're going to assess now for.
In anticipation of a repair.
Yeah, yeah. We're just gonna assess one time for one year and then, oh, just so happens that we have a positive balance.
If you've got excess resources, you can use that to buy down the repair assessment.
Yeah. I, I'm tracking with Monty. I, I know what he's saying.
I think, you know, that to me, bills are there for having those separate buckets because, you know, if it's all above and below place and, you know, it's a few years from now we wanted to repair, how much do we have available to buy it down? I don't know. It's all blended together.
I wish the general public would have to see us go through all of this stuff because.
I, I, I know, I'm already, my, my will, I mean, in the future, we're gonna be better about this. We may have a quarterly just a meeting quarterly to just say, where, where our fund balances now. And then that, I mean, it's not necessarily a public hearing, but at least it's a public meeting where we just looked at it a couple of times during the year to see what our ditch balances are and.
Well, back to Christine's point, are we trying to match up CD nine and fourteen or?
Is ten grand gonna make or break these people?
I don't know.
Spread out over a lot of people, but.
But it's a one-year assessment.
So, yeah, they have to pay that whole ten grand.
One year.
I mean, it's gonna be the same people that we heard already at the repair.
Oh, yeah.
They're gonna pay the biggest chunk of that ten grand.
Somebody told me they wrote eleven thousand dollar check for what we, what was assessed last year. That's a lot of money.
Correct, but how much did, did they get for the buffer strips?
Yeah, see, then we don't hear that.
We don't hear that because those same people got paid for their buffer strips too, though, that are writing that big check out. So if you subtract both of the, subtract one from the other.
At the end of the day, this board didn't make these ditches. They were here a hundred years ago and nobody maintained. I mean, we're just doing what is statually our duty. If you think fifteen is, if, do you think fifteen is what we should do on nine? You.
Well, I just think making them both equal would be better.
This is where I was saying, if we pooled the money, kinda like you had just mentioned, maybe we go, ma- maybe we make ditch nine twelve or thirteen and maybe bring the other one down to thirteen and they even out, we, we can kinda.
I, I think Chris would have to look. I don't believe you could pool the money. It's, I think statute's gonna tell you, you can't.
No, I, I, I get that, but right now the county's paying, funding it anyway.
Right.
But the other problem with making them the same is nine is the outlet to fourteen and it's also the outlet to twelve. So twelve and fourteen, through their redetermination of benefits amounts, if I have a benefit at ten percent, nine point nine of that might be on my system, but there's a percent in there that goes for an outlet benefit. So fourteen and twelve, because of an outlet benefit to nine, should expect to pay more. Than nine does. It's kinda how I'm thinking. Because nine ends up being the outlet to these. That's why they're part of the redetermination of benefits is higher, if you will. Because they're getting a benefit to the outlet. So that's why I don't know that it's important that they be equal. I understand your point though, because there, it's the same kind of people, right? But I think there's an argument there of why they would be different. Now, should they be ten grand apart? Maybe not.
Well, let's move it to ten and then fifteen.
I, I, you know, I, I, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna go with the recommendation of what Chris put in fifteen and just leave fourteen at fifteen.
But what do you wanna do with nine? You wanna keep, leave nine at five?
Recommendation at five. Or, or.
Split the baby and go ten?
Yep, go to ten.
Ten on CD nine and fifteen on CD fourteen? Okay. Got consensus on that? And last but not least, CD fifteen.
That was published, huh?
So, uh, fifteen, very similar to, to thirteen, uh, positive repair fund balance. But I think there's a end of year transfer coming to repay the loan. We do have a negative, uh, maintenance fund balance. But as we previously discussed, it was published once to be under, just under twenty thousand and we rounded it up to just an even twenty thousand. Just to start, uh, a maintenance fund.
I, so I'm having a mental block here. Why is there a positive balance on a repair?
According to Jackie, um, I asked the same question, cause, um, there's still a end of year transfer that she will do out of the repair fund, back to the general fund to pay back that loan.
So if I, if we see a, a positive balance, it's, it means it's paid. It's zero.
Right, when it's all said and done, that repair fund balance should be zero.
Yeah, correct.
Coming back and repaying the loan. Well, you don't do that. We just do it once a year.
Sure. But if we see a positive balance, the transfer has to happen. There really shouldn't be positive repair balances. Right, okay. I just wanna make sure I was clear about that.
So then when we pay that ten thousand back, we can subtract out off that twenty, twenty three thousand then, or not?
No, the ten thousand's gonna get paid back to the general fund and the repair fund balance will be zero.
Yeah, yeah, we'll still owe.
But we'll still owe.
Twenty three thousand.
There's not gonna be associated, well, we're gonna get out of business if we don't.
Yeah, but there will be a negative balance in the maintenance expense.
Well, according to what was supposed to have been done five, six, seven years ago.
Well, then according to twenty thousand, that won't be enough to cover the expenses. We're gonna be short three thousand.
You know, I, I don't think small negative balances are a huge issue, you know? Eventually you can adjust subsequent years assessments to cover it. It's the five hundred, six hundred thousand.
Are we good with a twenty thousand on CD fifteen then? All right, anything else on that, Chris, with the assessments? Clear as mud for Kale and you?
I think so. I've got some editing to do. I've got some questions to Kale. I'll have this revised and printed for the meeting this evening.
Anything else for ditch authority? So, meeting starts at six o'clock tonight.
So, so Ms. Chair, we scoped out the room, uh, last week, uh, there'll be a table up on, two tables up on the, the stage for the seating for ten, you all and staff and Kale. Um, unfortunately, there's just like two wireless mics, so you're gonna have to pass a mic around to speak. There'll be a, a mic stand down in the audience area for people to come up to talk. Uh, so they'll have to get out of their seats and walk down to the front, uh, for a mic there. Uh, we'll have presentation equipment hooked up. Um, they showed us that, so we should be good to go there. Uh, it'll be unlocked, so we don't have to worry about, have a key or anything, so, um, yeah.
What door do we go on?
The door that says auditorium.
So as you come to the main door, before you go in and it's to the right.
To the right.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Do we think there's gonna be a lot of people there?
I think there are, but I don't know. I just don't know.
So when we drive into parking lot and we see a hundred vehicles turn around?
Is it gonna be on YouTube or is it? Is it gonna be on YouTube, or is it...
No, no. We don't have the tech over there to... No, capture it, no.
We can, can we record it or not?
Well, we'll audio, well, audio record, but that's, that's, we won't video, no.
Anything else for ditch authority?
I don't have anything.
During the twelve oh eight. Mr. Chair, back to you.
Um, we were at the committee. Commissioner, needing updates? Do you have anything that's important, otherwise?
Do you want, what?
Anything that's important.
That's important. That needs to be just talked about.
I'm good on my end.
Okay.
No meetings? No committee of the halls?
No cows?
Dozens, dozens. Okay.
I'm gonna go slash his tires.
His rental car.
Chris mentioned the August twenty-fifth, uh, bonding tour. We probably should get this on the calendar at St. Cloud State University. We'll, we'll find out, Chris, a specific time from Grady.
Yeah.
Uh, but maybe you could at least, if you're interested in attending, hold the afternoon of August twenty-fifth for the bonding tour stop at St. Cloud State University in the afternoon. Uh, Chris wanted also to set a committee hole to discuss the five-year role program. Chris, do you have any recommended dates for us?
October.
Christmas. Halloween. Easter.
November.
Um...
October?
Yeah, September's not...
Is September? Oh, sorry, I gotta get the right month here.
I mean, next week would be too early for everybody.
Twenty-six is open for me, but I don't know.
Not, not for me, I guess.
Twenty-fifth is open for me in the morning, but...
What about August twenty-fifth then, in the morning? Monday, August twenty-fifth?
I don't have anything till one, so the twenty-fifth would...
Excuse me?
The twenty-fifth would work for me in the morning.
In the morning, okay.
Eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty, the twenty-fifth, okay, for, for five-year role program.
Yep.
Gets that settled?
Gets settled.
Just a few more others, uh, add to your calendars, um, August twenty, this is August twenty-six too. Commissioner Benoit mentioned this, so correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Benoit. You said there is RSVP Volunteer Recognition Event at the Sauk Rapids Government Center at nine AM on August twenty-sixth.
Correct.
This is an RSVP Volunteer Recognition Event, again, Sauk Rapids City Hall Government Center.
Yep, got that on my phone.
Nine AM, you're welcome to attend. The Touching Tables Event for Care is October ninth at noon, at New Life Church. October ninth at noon, New Life Church. See, Touching Tables. Am I describing that correctly?
Yes.
Yes, the Touching Tables Event. The Highway Twenty-three Coalition Annual Meeting is October third at eleven-thirty, October third, excuse me, eleven-thirty at the roadside tavern in Roscoe, Minnesota. I have no idea where that is.
It's right on twenty-three.
Right on twenty-three.
Between...
Makes sense?
It's between Richmond and Paint develop.
Ever see the movie Roadhouse?
The roadside tavern, Roscoe, Minnesota, October third.
Yeah.
Eleven-thirty.
Thanks, guys.
They do ask for registrations, uh, who might be interested in attending the...
I'll be there.
Commissioner Johnson, you got that? Beth, who else? Mr. Pop?
What, what is it?
October third, that's a Friday, at, at eleven-thirty.
Nope, I can't be there.
What's it for?
This is the Highway Chor- Twenty-three Coalition Annual Meeting.
And for what it's worth, we have Speaker of the House, Damon.
Right, will be in attendance.
I'll be there.
Commissioner Benoit? Others? No, okay. Commissioner Benoit brought this to our attention, a September fif- September tenth, um, sure how to describe this. It's described as a full-scale emergency event exercise at Sibley State Park.
That's our AMC.
This is, uh, this is during, this is during fall policy, yeah. So, that's probably out then. Yeah, okay, then we won't mention it.
Well, Commissioner Benoit wants to go.
Well, yeah. I mean, anybody can still go.
Commissioner, are you okay us leaving, leaving that off the list, since it's during fall pol-? It's in fall pol- cuz most of y'all are going to fall policy, right? Okay. I have, I believe, one last one. Please bear with me. You're invited to the groundbreaking for the Avivo Village Central, Minnesota. It is Friday, September twenty-sixth at ten. Friday, September twenty-sixth at ten.
How, how can they do a groundbreaking if they're six hundred thousand short?
Uh, that's an excellent question, and I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you. Well, I, I, if I may, um, Sandy Scholberg shared with me that Stearns County has committed six hundred thousand dollars of its statewide affordable housing aid to Avivo.
That's how they're doing it.
That's, I'm reporting what she has told me. As you may know, our statewide affordable housing goes to BEP and a housing trust fund for their rehab loan program, so... Again, that's Friday, September twenty-sixth at ten AM, the Avivo Village site, which is at thirty-one hundred First Street South in St. Cloud. Thirty-one hundred First Street South in St. Cloud.
RSVP for that. I, I won't be there. I've got a region seven W.
They are, you know, I'm trying to see if they're asking for, you know, I don't think they, they don't need RSVPs.
Did we already approve this?
I won't be there either.
No, I ain't gonna go.
Mr. Chair, thankfully, that's all I have.
Move for approval of cows, Mr. Chair.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Set the column, or adjourn to twelve fourteen.
Hang on, I have a, I have a couple of questions.
Before adjournment? Okay, we're not adjourned yet then?
No.
Yeah.
I, I just have a couple of questions, just to give me some clarification on some things.
Uh-huh.
Um, um, there's some misconception or, uh, stuff that are being sent on, uh, snapshots on, on Facebook. So, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for a little clarification, um, from maybe the board chair or whatever. So, when going through all this government center stuff, there was a, uh, a post out there saying, kind of trying to push blame towards the Foley City Council, because they placed something on to their consent agenda. So, am I I, I guess I'm looking for clarification as to what they were actually, what they were actually voting on.
I'd be happy to answer that, Commissioner Benoit. So, uh, because the board chose to use the HRA as the vehicle to issue the debt, uh, under the HRA law, if a county wants to operate an HRA project within a city's limits, it needs that city's consent to do so. So, that's what we asked the city to do, is say, okay, city, Foley, do you agree to allow us to do our county HRA project inside your city? And it was on their consent agenda, and they, and they agreed.
So, they were not voting yes or no to the building?
No.
Just for the HRA?
It was simply allowing us to do an HRA project within their city limit. Yep, that was it.
And the other question that I have is, uh, this was also put out there, that the planning commission was voting yes or no to the building.
Absolutely not.
And my, and my understanding, and I'll explain my understanding, and then we'll go from there and see if my understanding is correct. They were basically voting to say they did their job. Which was read and review it, and, and say, yes, we read and reviewed it, I, or we didn't do our job, because no, we didn't review it, and we, you know? I, I, that's what I'm...
So, so, yes, so all they were asked to do was review what was described as the redevelopment plan, which basically, it described the project and how it was gonna get paid for, and where it physically was inside the city. So, there was like a map that showed the boundaries of, of the county-owned property. So, all they had to do is simply say, yep, we reviewed it. That was it. So, that was their action. Yep. Yep.
Something else that was brought up at, you know, the public meeting when basically we're allowed to be crucified.
Of course.
But, um, that, that we're looking, or that, you know, we, I, I should be worried about my legacy, but for all you board members, and anybody out there who wants to take a look at the video, I wa- I didn't run for this board to have a legacy. I ran for this board to leave a legacy for Bentonville. And it's not personal to me, whether it was my legacy or not. So, uh, just to clarify, that, that is not was not my intention when I ran for the board to, was to create a legacy for myself, so. Um, and then some information that I did learn at a training course that we were at on, is there rules and regulations to, to public hearings? Because the attorneys, what they're saying at these trainings is not how that meeting was ran.
Well, yeah, yeah, Ms. I, I, Commissioner, I believe, you know, a public hearing is, you need to give the, the public the ability to speak. I think each county board can decide, for example, reasonable time limits, you know, like five minutes or ten minutes. I don't, I'm not aware in the statute of any specific rules as to, you know, the hows of conducting public hearings. I think it really is up to each county board to decide, you know, and I would say, you know, if someone's comments get to be a little outlandish and attacking, I think the board chair, chair can say, hey, you know, cool it.
Well, see...
But I, I think, you know, you, you just, you just have to simply give the public opportunity to speak, and that's really about all the statute says, so, yeah.
Or, you know, like that...
And I, and I, I agree
Yeah.
with the fact that they get the chance to speak, but this, this is in the presentation from the attorneys that were at the, the training. It says arguing with participants and/or discussion, decision makers is not, they have no right to. This, this is what came from the attorneys, and it says dominating the public input portion, uh, to preserve, um, others. And then it says cross-examining. These things are, what the attorney is saying is not allowed. Um, unlimited time, uh, beating a dead horse, making late written submissions, you know, like somebody coming up to you at a meeting and handing you something.
I know, for example, whenever we publish a, a public hearing notice, it says in that notice that all written materials must be received prior to the start of the public hearing. So, that's, that's made known to people, yeah, yeah.
So, I, I mean, and this is, this was just coming from the attorneys that, that was at a training that actually Mr. Johnson and I both were at, so.